Okay, I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council Special Meeting of December 9th, 2020, being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate the Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed. So please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up and speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak and when the item is called. So you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. So it's 5:00, convening for the purpose of closed session and call to order. I guess, do we need to do roll call at this point?
I can do a roll call for you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Fair.
Here.
Councilmember Mullen. Councilmember Mullen.
Wait, you muted yourself. You weren't.
Councilmember Mullen is giving us a thumbs up to indicate that he's here.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
That's weird. When it's mute, you can hear me when it's unmute. You can't hear me.
Oh.
Interesting.
Such is life.
Councilmember Wagner, you are muted.
But present for the record.
Oh, there you go.
There we go. Thank you, Councilmember Wagner, Mayor Proton Peak.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Public comment on closed session items?
You do not have anyone signed up to speak on the closed session item.
Okay, with that being the case, we will recess to closed session, and we'll be back at 6:00.
Pursuant to government code section 5495-7 to discuss the item that's listed on the posted agenda. So we'll see you all in the closed session room.
Exactly. Thank you.
So do I close the computer up? Do I close the computer or I just?
Jefferson, if you click the leave meeting button in the bottom right-hand corner.
Hello, hello. Are we ready? Have we let everyone in?
Mayor Pearson, we're still waiting for Councilmember Peak. If you could wait one more moment.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protown, sorry. You can start now, Mayor.
Okay, I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council Special Meeting of December 9th, 2020. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate the Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed. So please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom app if needed. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. So you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and for the public. Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Fair.
Here.
Councilmember Mullen.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner. Councilmember Wagner, you're muted, but I see that you're here. Mayor Proton Peak.
In the Zoom world.
Mayor Pearson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and justice for all. Okay, I am... Next, I'm gonna make the closed session report tonight because I want to personally explain the decision we have made. We all know that our city attorney is retiring, and when she leaves, the city will need, obviously, a city attorney. Now, it is also obvious that her departure coincides with the majority of council members being newly elected. Taking all that into account, the city has decided unanimously to appoint John Cotty as interim city attorney. John is a partner at Best, Best &amp; Krieger. He has practiced municipal law for over 20 years and has assisted Malibu matters over the years and has worked in coastal cities, and he knows the Coastal Act, which was important to us. John is willing and able to serve as our interim city attorney in the city council. We really appreciate that. This will allow the city uninterrupted legal services and defers the new council action on a permanent city attorney. I like the idea of appointing an interim city attorney because it gives the new council some breathing room. As we, as council members, need to get to know one each other, and we need to pull together for the community. It's time, I hope, to turn down the heat of the campaign and shift into governing mode. By appointing an interim city attorney to meet the immediate needs of the city, we are hoping to create space for this new council to work together. John Cotty is a seasoned, knowledgeable city attorney. I'm confident that he will be able to assist the council during this transition. And that's it for my closed session announcement and report. Can I have a motion on approval of the agenda? Say again?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a... Is that Rick? You made the motion. Jefferson, you second it?
That is correct.
Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Mullen.
Here. I mean, yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Peak.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on December 4th, 2020, with the amended agenda posted on December 8th, 2020.
Okay, thank you very much. We now move on to item 1A, and that is to consider urgency ordinance and introduce of ordinance regulating the permitting of wireless facilities in the public right-of-way and finding the same exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and adoption of resolution establishing design and development standards and standard permit conditions for wireless facilities in public right-of-way.
Mr. Merril, can I just... Are you ready for us?
Yes, we are so ready. Thank you so much. And thank you for getting us here and getting us here now.
Well, thank you all for being available and to the community of people who have been most interested in working on this issue for all of their attention and time over the last couple of weeks. You know, tonight marks the second occasion that I have been a Bedensky on this topic. And so I appreciate how tolerant you all have been of that. The most important thing that I want to say at the get-go is, while this is a bit of a swan song for me personally, for you as a council, this is just one component part of the overall program. And I wanted to just set up the big picture, and then I'm gonna turn this over to Gail, who will be assisted by Richard to give you the staff report. But the big picture is, obviously, that the city has an outdated wireless ordinance. And the council has put the update of that ordinance on its work plan, and it's been a little bit of slow-going. It's been assigned to outside council to prepare it, and there's just a lot of issues that go into why that hasn't come fully before you. But let's just accept that's where we are. As the time was passing, some of the residents began to advocate various actions in this area, and it culminated with, you know, kind of a bigger discussion a few months ago where this community activist had produced a 50-plus-page ordinance representing kind of a complete overhaul of the city's regulations. And the plan was, and still kind of is, to... When we get... Now, we have gotten, but we're waiting for the telecom law firm's draft to take that and to take the community's draft and to help produce through a public hearing process what would ultimately come to you guys, and that's still there. But at the meeting where the outside council's contract was under consideration, a number of residents spoke about not only the slow progress of the ordinance provisions, but concerns about health effects of these facilities and about their concerns about the federal law and some court decisions that were usurping the local control of this issue. And so that was my first moment of Bedinskiness because there's a difference between the ordinance that we were gonna do and the advocacy that we could choose to do. And so we peeled out the advocacy part, and subsequently, the council entertained and adopted an advocacy plan to seize back our control of this issue to the extent possible, or at least have an influence on those that are making policies for us. The next request that came from the group of residents was basically a desire to have the council adopt on an urgency basis their proposed ordinance just right away. And during the meeting where that advocacy was happening, if you want to listen carefully, which I was, and I know you were as well, there were kind of two issues. One was the kind of slow progress. We gotta get this done finally. But the other was a very focused concern about December and January going by while the small cell facilities would be put up in the right-of-way without, you know, any more robust design standards than we currently have. And when we finished that meeting, you know, I began to think, well, maybe we could do something along those lines and consulted with Gail Karish and Andrew McCullough, who are telecom lawyers at Best, Best &amp; Krieger, about the possibility of not... The reason we can't do the full ordinance is because the LCP has to be amended in accordance with the LCP process, and the zoning ordinance provisions have to be amended in accordance with the zoning ordinance. So one of the limitations we face, and I hope this was clear in the staff report, is that we can't be inconsistent with what we already have. But we can be more specific and more restrictive in the public right-of-way, which is not necessarily controlled from our zoning ordinance. So as Gail will explain to you, we're kind of threading that needle here. We are going to take the right-of-way and the design standards and propose to do something immediately, and that will address the major concern that we heard at the last meeting of December and January and February going by and things going up that are ugly beyond reason, and this will give us our chance. So I'm glad that we're doing that. But I want people to be clear that nothing is being rejected about the whole proposal. When we went through the ordinance, we didn't go through and say yes and no, but we went through and distinguished between now and later. So now, tonight, right-of-way, just in the streets, aesthetics, design standards. Later, the rest of it, which, when I say later, it's, you know, continuing and ongoing, including the next step being next week on December 16th at the workshop. So that is kind of where we are. I also wanted to say that tonight's proposal is the product of considerable effort and coordination among a lot of lawyers and the city's staff in consultation with Scott McCullough, who's the lawyer representing the residents group working on this issue. And if you are a policy wonk or yourself a lawyer, I suspect that you will really enjoy this evening. And with that, let me turn it over to Gail to go through our presentation.
Thank you, Kristi. I'm not sure how I advance slides. Do I just say, "Do it," and someone magically will do that? Yes, okay. So, thank you. Thank you for having me here. I'm gonna try and keep this short, not too wonky, and certainly not like some class in telecommunications law. But I am going to go through just sort of the highlights of what we're doing here this evening or what's proposed for you to take action on. So Kristi's already addressed some of these issues, but why does the city need urgency ordinance? Some of the main... You know, the more detailed information is actually in your staff report and in the ordinance draft. But just to hit some highlights, there's a tremendous demand for wireless services. That's translating into a lot of demand by carriers to put in, to make applications for wireless facilities, and in particular, in the public rights of way, that they're with the latest technology and changes and kind of infilling capacity, building capacity. A lot of applications are now for wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. Malibu's code is outdated, in particular, with respect to changes in state and federal law that have happened over the last decade and certainly with respect to wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, which is kind of more of a new phenomenon. There are limitations in federal law on what a city can do, and I'll go through a little bit of that at a very high level. But so cities do have to make locations available, but they are allowed to protect aesthetics, enforce structural, fire safety rules, other sorts of protections. The existing zoning code does include the chapter on wireless. It does include wireless in the right-of-way, but the general consensus has been that it's basically inadequately addressed because it was written primarily for macro cell towers. Next slide, please. So this is just a little schematic that kind of gives you a sense of what we're talking about here. You have your... At the top, you see a tower. It's a typical, you know, macro site. You might see along a highway. You see facilities on rooftops. And what we're talking about here really only the small cells, or sometimes they're called distributed antenna systems. It's just a little bit of a different way of delivering the same sort of wireless service using several antennas. But we're talking about wireless facilities, that are typically small cells in the public right-of-way and not the macro towers or rooftop facilities. Next slide, please. So the regulatory situation, this is very high level for local governments. Wireless providers and telephone companies have a limited state franchise right to use the public right-of-way. That's been in state law for decades, Public Utility Code 7901. They also have a right under state law in California Public Utilities Commission rules to use utility infrastructure for their facilities. So they are allowed by state law, and the utilities cannot say no to them using the utility poles, for example, for wireless. Local governments mainly regulate the placement, safety issues, and aesthetics within some limitations that I'll cover. And there, for example, decisions must comply with these limits. Some examples of limitations is a decision to deny an application has to be based on substantial evidence. You cannot regulate based on RF emissions concerns. You cannot effectively prohibit through your regulations or your decisions the provision of personal wireless services. The California Public Utilities Commission, because we're talking about installations in the public right-of-way and utility infrastructure, they are the main body that sets rules for safety of utility infrastructure. General Order 95 is one of the orders that they've issued, but there are several. And so that's their principal responsibility. They don't look at things like aesthetics. The FCC has a role here. They license wireless spectrum. They have the authority under federal law to set the standards for acceptable RF emissions. They have set a number of time limits for local action, which are part of the reason for some of the administrative changes that are typically proposed. And they have also implemented some other federal laws that require local governments, in some instances, to approve facilities that meet certain standards and that we typically call eligible facilities requests. Next slide, please. So one of the big impacts on your regulatory authority as a local government is the FCC Small Cell Order, which was adopted in 2018 and has been the subject of court challenge, and most of it has been upheld. That one established shorter... There were shot clocks or timelines for action the FCC had adopted in the past, but in this more recent order, they adopted shorter shot clocks for processing wireless, small wireless facilities. And those are the ones that primarily go in the public right-of-way. 60 days for a use of an existing pole, 90 days for new poles or replacement poles. They also clarified that all of the local government authorizations that are required are included in that same shot clock. So it's quite a burdensome process to be able to meet in a very short timeline. With respect to colocation, which is a term that we hear referenced a lot, they took a kind of a different spin on it than we're traditionally used to. They say colocation means co-locating on an existing structure, even if there's no wireless on that structure. And so the 60-day shot clock would apply, for example, if an existing utility pole is going to be used, not a replacement. They redefined this effective prohibition standard, which is the standard that you cannot violate and that you cannot, through your regulation or your actions, create an effective prohibition of personal wireless services. There was traditionally a standard that looked at whether there were gaps in coverage and whether the new facility was going to be the least intrusive means of filling that gap. The FCC redefined that standard for small cells to look at whether the action of local government would materially inhibit the provision of service. And there's some debate about how you actually apply this new materially inhibit standard, but the intent of the FCC was trying to make it easier for carriers to prove that local action would create an effective prohibition. The FCC Small Cell Order also established some tests and set out some presumptively reasonable amounts for permitting fees and for fees for use of city-owned infrastructure in the public right-of-way. I know the city of Malibu doesn't own a lot of streetlights, but if you were to make a streetlight available, the FCC has established what they believe is a safe harbor rate, rental rate for using that streetlight. And they have established... The basic principle is that all of your fees have to be cost-based and reasonable. And then finally, they also established a test for what would be permitted aesthetic regulations, including things like undergrounding and spacing standards. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. Next slide, please. So under... The FCC had a little bit more elaborate standards in their order, but on appeal to the Ninth Circuit that our firm participated in, we were able to knock out some of the criteria that the FCC had established. So what we have now is that, under federal law, local aesthetic requirements for small cells must be reasonable, meaning that they have to be technically feasible and reasonably directed to avoiding or remedying intangible public harm of unsightly or out-of-character deployments. And they have to be published in advance. So it's very important to have them out there for applicants to know what your standards are so that they know what they have to try to meet in their applications. Next slide, please. So some examples of things that are typically regulated under this category of aesthetic regulation. Location, we'll try to protect historic areas or scenic view sheds, things like that, requiring stealthing of the facility, you know, colors, painting, other concealment so that the wireless facility looks like something other than a wireless facility. And that's quite important for controlling future changes under another federal law that allows some changes to be made as a right. So stealthing the facility and some things like height and size. The FCC, in their Small Cell Order, has a definition of what is a small wireless facility. But, and it's quite tall and large, but that... Our interpretation is that that is really for the purposes of the shot clocks and that you have the right, as a local government, to control and regulate the aesthetics of small wireless facilities. And that might mean that it's appropriate in certain locations for them to be smaller than the FCC-defined term. Next slide, please. So what is the approach we took? And Kristi touched on this already. So what we have before you tonight proposes to create a wireless permitting process specifically for wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, and that would be in Title 12, so not in the zoning code, but in Title 12, which is where you have street sidewalks and public places. And that will provide you the flexibility to make future amendments, should you need to, more easily without as many levels of review and approval. It would be just a matter for the city council to deal with. We also propose in the package to establish the standards, the engineering design location standards, aesthetic standards by city council resolution, which also gives you more flexibility. And as the technology changes, you'll be able to take that into account and more easily revise the standards. We also made an attempt in this package to reasonably comply with the FCC Small Cell Order. There are ambiguities in the order. This is an order issued by a federal agency that doesn't do planning or aesthetics, but they like to come up with rules. So we did have to make some judgments as to what would be appropriate. Next slide, please. So just to hit some highlights, major provisions. There's a definition section in the ordinance that is consistent with FCC orders and state and federal law. The scope, as I mentioned, is just small cell facilities and then that other category that is allowed by right under federal law, and that's called eligible facilities requests, and that's certain modifications to existing wireless facilities. So, but all of the only facilities in the public right-of-way. The Planning Director would administer the chapter and is the reviewing authority for applications. In the ordinance, we have decisions can be appealed to a hearing officer. And that is... We can talk about that more, but the main purpose of using a hearing officer was to be able to try to meet those very tight FCC shot clocks. Next slide, please. There are... There's a little bit of language about minimum standards to guide deployment, but the real detail on what the standards for aesthetics and everything else are in that separate resolution that we mentioned. Aesthetics and everything else are in that separate resolution that we mentioned. There is a direction to have application requirements. That typically in the city now has a separate application form that will need to be updated. There is, there was a proposal by Mr. McCullough to include minimum requirements. For the applications and we're still looking at those, but that may be something that you could add to your resolution if you wanted to in the future. Right now, we're we're still going through that list. On public noticing, that's also set forth in the ordinance. There is, there are two public notices required. One is the notice by the city that will be to owners and occupants within a thousand feet of the proposed site. And that will go out within five business days of receipt of the application that's. More speedy than your your current. Wireless provisions. And the second, secondly, there is a notice that will be posted at the proposed site by the applicant within seven days of filing. And that's to alert passersby that might not otherwise receive the the notice from the city. And then the ordinance also includes findings of approval that are targeted specifically to these types of facilities, the small wireless facilities. Next slide, please. The resolution, as I mentioned, is where you'll find the design, engineering, safety, location standards that are quite detailed. We're also in the resolution is a list of standard permit permit conditions of approval. And these can be modified on particular approval decisions, but why it's important to have standard permit conditions. Out there is that if there were an instance where a shot clock were missed and there were. An available deemed granted remedy, such as with eligible facilities request. There would be permitted conditions that definitely apply. And then also application requirements, they're not in the resolution that's before you, but that may be something you want to add in the future. If you decide you want to go that route, otherwise the the normal course would be that. Staff would deal with the application requirements and updating the application forms. Next slide, please. So in the standards, there are provisions on locations. There's a preference clearly for. Using existing infrastructure. There are separation and setbacks from certain property types in certain areas. New poles are, they're a strong attempt to discourage new poles, so new poles are only available when all existing. And replacement options are not technically feasible. And of course, we're only allowing small wireless facilities, so no large macro towers would be allowed within the public right of way. Next slide. Just just a summary of some of the provisions antennas should be as small and unobtrusive as possible. Accessory equipment should be enclosed in antenna shroud. Or placed underground. There is a preference for flat rate electric billing or use of smart meters, which are small and usually just can be attached to the pole. Or even within the shroud. There are provisions requiring compliance with safety standards, including ADA and others. Lighting is prohibited unless required by the FAA. Cables and wires should run internally or under conduit when on a wooden pole. These are just some some highlights of some of the provisions. Next slide, please. I think we have some more. So there are some standards that are specific to different types of installation, so if a street. Light pole is being used, it should be stealth. Equipment and pole top shrouds were contained within the pole or underground for utility poles. Again, it should be stealth. It should continue to look like a utility pole, not like something else, so you want the equipment. To match the color of the pole. Equipment should be stacked close together on the same side of the pole if it's pole mounted. For replacement poles also a stealth requirement. Try to put them in the same location as the pole being replaced and all the wires and cables inside the pole where where that's possible. For new poles, as I mentioned earlier, they're discouraged, so the a waiver would have to be. Obtained to be able to put place a new pole. And there's a ban on new wooden poles unless they're required to match existing poles in the surrounding area. And again, new poles must be stealth, match dimensions, design of similar types of poles in the area, so the idea is if you, there is a new pole, they. It will blend in with other vertical infrastructure in the surrounding area. Next slide, please. In the standard permit conditions, the permit duration is ten years that there is a. State law that that allows for a ten year permit without any question, so that's what we put. The once approved construction has to happen within three years unless there's good cause for an extension. The city may take certain actions in in the event of an emergency to to disable or remove a wireless facility. There is insurance indemnification, a performance bond for removal of the facility. General maintenance requirements requirement on abandonment. And several others. Next slide, please. So what you have also, I think you received this just today. Was a red line of both the ordinances and the resolution. This, after the packet went out, we had the opportunity to to discuss and receive more comments from Mr. McCullough. Who is representing some of the citizens in your community. And we incorporated numerous changes based on on that feedback. And as I mentioned, there are some other items such as application and some further insurance requirements. That Mr. McCullough proposed that that are still being reviewed. Next slide, please. So what we have before you in the recommended action is to consider and adopt the urgency ordinance. Consider and adopt the resolution that accompanies it and find the urgency ordinance resolution. For example, from Sequo, and if you so choose, also introduce the regular ordinance. That's it for me. Next slide, I think that's it. Yep, so that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I got a quick question. Detail before public comment. You know, you mentioned that there's a lot of redlining and it's almost like real time changes going on here. Yet we're going to vote on whether we want to pass it. Is there? A version? That we can vote on? I mean, it sounds like there's changes that are still being incorporated.
Well, there are, there are certainly changes that we're that were or I would say proposals that we're still looking at. For example, there was a long list, I think four pages of application requirements, and we just didn't have the time. The opportunity that that was staff. What you have before you in the red line is what we would be. Suggesting that you could adopt this evening. So the red line includes additional comments from the community group that's been working on this. That we believe are fine, legal and fine. So if the council were to adopt the red line version, you would be adopting the most recent up to date version. But let me also say that, no, nothing is adopted, as you know, in stone. So we know that there are going to be changes. We got a workshop next week. We know that this is going to cover a lot more things. What we've tried to do is come up with something that will work and withstand a challenge. And so that's why we're recommending that you adopt the red lined version. You know, accept all the changes and adopt that tonight, and then we will continue to do the work that we've been doing with you and with the community. To make improvements as we can.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions before we go to the public speakers? Okay, let's go to a public speakers. I'm sure we have a few.
Yes, we have twenty-four speakers for this item, so I'm going to read them all in order and then call them one by one to speak.
Okay, thanks.
They are Stephanie Sun Woo, Suzie Duff, John C. McGinley. Kirk Odean, Kelly Meyer, Jeff Luke's, June Shanty Luke's, Jenny Rosinko. Jerry Churchill. Nicole McGinley, W. Scott McCullough, Billy and Kate McGinley, Paula Murphy. Daisy Kim Ping. Monty Gordon, Tony Simmons, Susan Foster, Bruce Silverstein, Linda Gibbs. Jessica Isles, Craig Hill, Mark Graham. Corey Insanitas resident and Ryan Embry.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, our first speaker is Stephanie Sun Woo.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Stephanie.
Thank you. I think I have a slide that's supposed to go up. Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, council members, Fair, Mullen, Peak and Wagner and Mayor Pearson. Thank you for honoring our request and holding this special meeting. I am very grateful to you and all the city staff and attorneys who are working on this issue. Thank you to everyone. As a twenty-one year Malibu resident, I am here and support the community's effort to deal with the enormous number of applications for small cell. Installations and wireless facilities. I am opposed to their proliferation due to aesthetic concerns. We live in one of the most beautiful cities and until a few years ago, I took it for granted, partly because I didn't clearly know why. Malibu is so beautiful and special. A few years ago, I met a Santa Barbara resident, and when I shared that I lived in Malibu, she reacted in what I thought was an odd manner. Shoulders relaxed and head and eyes rolled back. She said, I love Malibu. It's so beautiful. When I didn't, while I didn't disagree, I thought it was odd because she was coming, this was coming from someone who also lives in a beautiful seaside town. And so I started wondering what made Malibu so special even to a Santa Barbara resident. And the answer I realized is that Malibu is so much more rural and full of nature than Santa Barbara. And as I learned more about Malibu, I came across our vision and mission statements. And realize that Malibu's beauty and specialness are by deliberate design. And as residents, we are responsible custodians of Malibu's rural characteristics. The proliferation of small cell installations and wireless facilities conflicts with Malibu's vision and mission statements. With Malibu's rural character. Also, any purported benefits of the installations are irrelevant in our community because we are committed. To sacrifice urban and suburban conveniences in order to protect and preserve rural characteristics. I am grateful to live in a city that respects its natural environment and honors it with noble vision and missions, mission statements. I ask you to keep them in mind when deciding the future of Malibu's beauty. Thank you so much, and I think there's another slide that would kind of illustrate the point. Of what Malibu could become. And lastly, the third slide of the beauty that we want it to remain. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Our next speaker is Suzie Duff. Have a Suzie, but it's not Suzie Duff, and she's not unmuting, so I think we'll try to come back to Suzie Duff. And our next speaker will be John McGinley.
Good evening, council.
Hi, John.
We're so glad you're holding this special meeting. You're all entering your month off, and some of you are at the end of your time in office, yet here we are. With two meetings lined up for this issue. Thank you to all of those that were part of making this happen. The city attorney has been working with the community's attorney, Scott McCullough, to present a product that will be meaningful and substantial. They were able to reach consensus on many things, and we were thankful for their collaboration and open minded approach. There are. A few items where the city attorneys were not able to accept our request. For some, they did not necessarily oppose the idea, but believed resolution should await final passage, and we understand that to some degree. Indeed, we already agreed to drop some requests for purposes of the urgency ordinance. But there are others that we firmly believe are imperative for the urgency ordinance or resolution. If you'd start playing the pictures, please. Let me give you a good example. Yesterday, I took these photos in Western Malibu and PCH, and to be clear, this is the sort of thing that is occurring throughout our neighborhood. And on our scenic highways. All you have to do is see these pictures to understand how the industry is prodigiously installing facilities as fast as possible. Without much care about their work or the impact on the community. Look at the dangling wires and equipment, some on the ground, coiled in bundles or even crossing over other wires. There is no such thing as stealth blending on display here. These are all extraordinary safety and fire risks. This is what needs to urgently stop before we have another disaster. We obviously cannot trust them to do the right thing, so we have to lay it out in detail. The solution takes four forms. First, we need stronger, specific and detailed engineering design requirements and. Proof the designs were vetted by properly credentialed experts, licensed engineers. Second, we must make them show in full how they intend to meet those requirements in the application. So the application content specifications must also be robust and specific. Third, the conditions must mandate the approved design be implemented. Fourth, there must be post-construction inspections and reports that verify they were inspected. And then ongoing monitoring to ensure there is no slippage. The FCC says local authorities can have these requirements, but they must be spelled out in advance. So that anyone wanting to apply for facility placements knows the rules and has a clear mandate. We need to be urgent, specific and spell out in great detail the steps that must be taken to safeguard our community. Please let us quit relying on the honor system with industry. This has not worked and it will not work. We ask you to implement the very specific language we have proposed for engineering design, application content and conditions. This is worth fighting for. This is for our fire safety. This is for.
Your time is up.
This is for Malibu. Thank you, council.
Thank you, John.
Our next speaker is Kirk Odean.
Good evening. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to give a quick discussion here with twenty-four speakers. I'll be brief. We we had a very lengthy ordeal with T-Mobile particularly and Sprint prior to that. Starting from two thousand and twelve onwards to about two thousand and eighteen, that some of you may remember, and we. Gail was very instrumental in supporting our local neighborhood and giving us some good consultation. So I'm glad to see that she's participating here and it looks like you guys have done a lot of work. I mainly have a couple of questions. The permit fees seem to be pretty small during our efforts and the appeals. There weren't hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on our behalf, but there were certainly tens of thousands of dollars spent by the city. And I would suggest that maybe there's some way to mitigate that expense that we would undergo. The applicants actually came in with very poor analyses, very poor loads and weights on the poles. The actual poles that they were citing were were stronger than what was actually in the ground, and we proved and showed a lot of that evidence. To win a couple of appeals. And with all that submitted data that's erroneous on their behalf, and I'm sure there's going to be more of that in the future, it would really be wise to have some mechanism to recover. The the city's costs that we're going to incur as these are continually contested. My second question would be, will the submittals that are going to come in in the next couple of months? Be retroactively submit subjected to the new and upgraded pending comprehensive ordinance? Or will they be able to circumvent anything that we we put in place next year? Because of their quick rush to make some medals as fast as possible. And lastly, the prior slides that everyone just saw, you know, that's a lot of that is as a result of the fire, but it's a very important. Aspect on on our concern is we have a bunch of sprint antennas that we're told by T-Mobile are no longer used or obsolete. They're the biggest obtrusive things. Now we have the small DAS unit, but after the fire, we got the. But after the fire, we got the, not only the three Sprint antennas back in position, but a fourth one was put up on the pole as well. And we now have the new DAS antenna. So it really looks like they're maximizing any possibility for all the infrastructure they can put on with the potential of exploiting that in the future as opposed to really downsizing in the good spirit that they presented there, their original requests and applications for. So I thank you for your time and look forward to the continued work that the staff and the hired attorneys have been helping us with. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Our next speaker is Kelly Meyer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Kelly, yes.
Hi, Mikey. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much, first of all, for making the time and figuring out the logistics of putting this special meeting together. It's, yeah, I'm very appreciative. And like I said, I'm the youngest or least educated member of this team. And short of what I've learned from Nicole, coming and going, and the information that she's sent to me, I just want to agree with what everyone has said. And I'm learning so much about this very complex and important issue. And I thank you again for taking it seriously. And above, you know, just, you know, what's obvious, fire safety, safety of our children's health, the aesthetics and the value, land value of people's personal property. I just want to say, the thing to me that is most profound in this process is that you all stopped, you took a breath, you saw the tsunami coming that is real. You know, it's very difficult. A telecom is coming, you know, and these companies are huge and big. And you decided, you know, David and Goliath, that it is important, what we feel as residents and as a community, and the beauty and the respect that we have for nature and our children's health, et cetera, is worth fighting for, even if it's just, you know, managing what we know, you know, is coming. That train has left the station, but it's very important, and I cannot thank you enough. And I just am proud of our city, and it's really what's going to maintain the heart and soul of our community. And I just thank this team that has worked endlessly, that much I know for sure, the amount of hours that has been, have been put in. So thank you. I'm proud to be a Malibu resident.
Thank you, Kelly.
Our next speaker is Jeff Luke's.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Jeff, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Jeff Louts. First, to kind of reiterate, yeah, I too, in our family, is just so grateful to have you guys protecting us and watching over Malibu's backs right now. It's really important. We all live here. We all love Malibu. We can agree on that. We're, we'd love to try to keep it protected. But the one thing I was going to talk about is the ordinance. The proposed urgency ordinance right now provides a procedure where appeals from application approvals will be reviewed by a director instead of by the city council. We disagree with the placement of the final decision-making on these antennas with an unelected person and cutting out our elected representatives out of the process. We are seeking a change to this proposed procedure. The staff wants administrative processing by the director with appeal to, and final decision by an appointed hearing office. No council review. We have agreed to initial decision by the director, but want the right to seek appeal to our council rather than an appointed hearing officer. Our terms address the staff's concerns by allowing timing adjustments as needed to prevent shot clock violations or deemed approved outcomes. We just really want our council to have the last word because we know they're going to have our backs. And thank you, guys, all of you, for all your time and commitment to Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
And our next speaker is June Shanty Louts.
Good evening, council.
Hi.
Hi. Tonight, I speak on behalf of the 75 members of the Malibu Agricultural Society. As a group, we are enthusiastic about growing food here in a natural environment. And we have been concerned over the past few years, and especially the past four months, about the recent proliferation of small cell antennas. We are thankful to local citizens like Nicole McGinley and Lonnie Gordon for the initiative to address these problems related to the cell towers and the work by Scott McCullough. First, and most importantly, thank you, council, for gathering tonight and making this Malibu issue a top priority. Second, our biggest concern regarding the proposed urgency ordinance is, and the proposal from the packet on Friday, is that it doesn't contain sufficient protection to keep wireless facilities away from homes, schools, and parks. We would like to see setbacks of 1,500 feet, whereas the proposed language allows setbacks too close for our comfort. 1,500 feet does not adversely affect cell coverage. We want a 1,500-foot setback. Currently, wires are everywhere, creating eyesores, worry about high fire risk, and reduce property values. We don't want them in our residential neighborhoods. Our justification for a separation and setback are because the cells are visual blight. No matter how much stealth, they still stick out. Not even, even if not obviously a wireless facility. This affects our community image and property values. We want fewer installations that are as far apart as possible and to minimize placement near residences, schools, and parks. Also, we feel strand mounting is not aesthetically desirable and can put added strain on our wires and pose potential fire hazards. We do not want them on our lines. Finally, the proposed urgency ordinance provides a procedure where appeals from application approvals will be reviewed by a director instead of by the city council. We disagree with the placement of the final decision-making on these antennas with an unelected person, cutting our elected representatives out of the process. We are seeking changes to this proposed procedure. In review, please require 1,500-foot setbacks, minimize fire risks, fewer installations that are as far apart as possible, avoiding residences, schools, and parks, and place the final decision-making power in the hands of our elected representatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Rosinko.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Jenny.
Thank you. Good evening to the city council members and to the city council staff, or city staff, and to our Malibu community members attending this special meeting. I come before you as an advocate for my community of Paradise Cove. I understand that living in Malibu comes with both wonderful benefits and some modern inconveniences. I'm okay with those modern inconveniences, including poor cellular reception and less data download and internet capacity. I am already concerned about the infringement of our privacy with the expansion of artificial intelligence. I do not need or want more data collection capabilities here in Malibu. I also live on a street adjacent to PCH and look out my front window at a utility pool, many utility poles on the highway. I fear the day that those utility poles will house small cell antennas. I would never choose to live near a cellular tower. Even before the pandemic, I spent most of my days in my home raising and educating my children. This is where my family lives, sleeps, learns, and plays. I do not want small cell antennas across the street from my home and the homes of my neighbors. I am okay with sacrificing data streaming capabilities. I do not need or want every appliance and device in my home to be smart and to communicate with each other. I am horrified at the proliferation of small cell antennas that were installed throughout Malibu while we were all under lockdown and preoccupied with COVID-19. I'm just asking that we please stop allowing these small cell antennas to be placed throughout our city. I completely oppose this technology. However, if these small cell antennas must be placed in our community, it's incredibly important to me that we have a 1,500-feet minimum setback requirement. I do not want the poles across PCH from my home loaded with small cell antennas. They do not belong in residential areas. I strongly feel they do not belong in Malibu at all. I'm very grateful that you called the special meeting and that the city of Malibu is taking seriously a need to protect our city from wireless infiltration. I'm also grateful that you allowed me to speak and to voice my concerns and opinions. And I wish everyone a very happy and peaceful holiday season. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Jenny.
Our next speaker is Jerry Churchill.
Hi, Mikey. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Jerry.
Hi. Well, you probably know me. I'm Jerry Churchill, 18-year homeowner in Malibu. I'm also a sheriff volunteer in Malibu. My husband's a firefighter. 18 years in Malibu, it also means we lived through the Corral Canyon fires, which burned down 53 homes in our neighborhood, almost every house on our block except ours. And as you know, I was on call, I was on duty through the whole Woolsey fire. So fire safety is very important to us. It's very personal to me. We are grateful that the city attorneys have been working so closely with Scott McCullough to ensure that we have the strongest fire safety protections in place. Susan Foster, an RF engineer, spent countless hours crafting electrical engineering safety standards to ensure whatever we are placing on these poles throughout our communities will be installed with the highest safety standards in mind. We really need to stay on this. Can I see the first, can you show the first photo, please? My first photo? Okay, in this photo, which was taken approaching the Zuma Ridge Trailhead parking lot at the top of Bush, which I love to hike, and many of you love to hike, it's literally steps away from acres and acres of brush fuel. Can you show the next photo, please? That should be zoomed in. Thank you. This is zoomed in. The cabinet for this facility is wide open. It's accessible to anyone. It's reachable, tamperable, it lets people in. This is a fire hazard. Someone could literally put a screwdriver in there and start a fire right at the top of Bush Drive. This is what happens when we don't have meticulous provisions in place. Please integrate every word of Scott, Susan, and Tony's product into our urgency ordinance to protect our community. And I just want to say, Jenny really put it quite clear. You know, we moved to Malibu because of the country atmosphere. And I, you know, I want to use the internet less. I don't have any social media. I live in Malibu because I love that vibe, that country vibe. And clearly, you know, these telecom companies are coming in, and they don't care what jumble of a mess. I mean, the photos that John McGinley showed were just absolutely horrific. Our children grew up, they went to the Little Point Doom School, and there was none of this jumbles of wires. Please, please, we need to, we need to get a handle on this. And thank you, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Jerry.
Our next speaker is Nicole McGinley.
Hello. I feel a lot of relief for our community that we are putting forward an urgency ordinance. I am grateful to all of those that requested this special meeting and feel as though a necessary community need is being met. This topic is not glamorous and is not warm and fuzzy. In fact, it's been gritty, and it's often nitpicky and extremely specific. It's grinding with hard reading and technical language. But through this steep slog, it is necessary. It is necessary because before my eyes, I have watched our town, our streets, PCH, our view, our community, change. It's as old as time. It's easy to get away with stuff when no one's watching, and the industry has proven to us that very fact. And our community is in a very vulnerable state, as John's photo certainly demonstrated. Thank you for setting the tone for this meeting to be one of collaboration. We hope to continue to be heard tonight. The supplements that were just posted, it is clear that we're not there yet. And I do appreciate what Christie said at the start of the meeting. This is a work in progress, and we'll be able to do more with the permanent ordinance. But we do need certain securities in the interim. So for those, please consider, number one, we need setbacks to be 1,500 feet from homes, schools, and parks. Number two, strand-mounted is listed in this ordinance as an aesthetic preference. You know, the photos with the antenna on the wire? This could not be further from the community's preference. In fact, we would like strand-mounting banned entirely. And we feel they are unsightly, and they do put more strain and load on the lines and create a potential fire risk. Number three, we need to require applicants to carry pollution insurance. They can't have a pollution exclusion in their policy as it's listed now. They must carry pollution insurance. Number four, the application requirements that were submitted by Scott McCullough have been omitted, and they need to be in there for the type of protection that we need in this interim basis. I thank you again so much for calling this meeting. I will sleep well tonight if the changes suggested throughout all of the speakers can be implemented. We've gone through all of this trouble, and I would like nothing more than to be able to know that we have protection in place while we journey through the permanent ordinance procedures. Thank you so much, everyone that has been involved in this. I am so grateful we are here right now.
Thank you, Nicole.
Our next speaker is W. Scott McCullough.
Hey, hopefully y'all can hear me?
Yep, I can hear you, Scott.
Great. Um, I want to start out by thanking Trevor, Christie, and Gail, and their entire team for working with us on this. Especially in the last round, they did incorporate a lot of the changes that we'd asked for. And, you know, thank you, thank you. You've made it a lot better than it was. So what remains? Well, as you've heard, there's the separation and setback issue. I think that's already been adequately addressed. There's the issue of appeal to the city council rather than the hearing officer. You know, I, that's the preference of the community. I will say that they did give some revised language in today's version. And if the council chooses to go with the hearing officer, which again, we would prefer you not, but if they do, the most recent language does represent a slight improvement in some respects. We still have a problem with the notice requirements because the affected residents will not be able to be notified in time to get in there and help the director determine whether an application is sufficiently complete. They won't get noticed until after that 10-day period under the shot clock rules, as already elapsed. The other and most important item is the application content. And what you see scrolling before you is the language that we submitted to to your team a couple of days ago. And then last night, I gave them the language that you see in green. I heard when they said that, you know, this is all still under examination and could be added. Our request is that the information that's listed in green, specifically items V through IX, and then XXXIV be included on a temporary basis. And those are the safety electrical requirements. The reason that that needs to be required in the application is because all of the electrical safety information and the design requirements- is because all of the, the electrical safety information and the design requirements and the conditions and the post-construction inspections flow together. Unless we see in the application how they propose to meet the engineering design requirements, we cannot guarantee that they have met. We cannot ensure that a, a properly credentialed engineer has actually vetted the design requirements and in particular, the safety requirement. The, the most important part is the safety piece, and that's what you see. Not all of what is in green, but again, in items V through IX and then triple XIV. Our alternative request, if you choose, thank you. Please include at least those in, on an interim basis. Thank you.
Thank you Scott, appreciate it.
And then Billy and Kate McGinley signed up to speak together. So we'll unmute the McGinley account and see what they want to do. The only McGinley we have is Nicole McGinley and she's not unmuting. So we'll try to come back to Billy and Kate at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Paula Murphy.
Hello Mayor and members of the city council. I wanted to speak tonight to express my support of developing and implementing a strong urgency ordinance and resolution for the small cell installations throughout the city of Malibu. In the past, I've spoken about the importance of keeping these towers as far away from the schools, playgrounds, and residential areas as possible to improve the chances of good health in our children and our most vulnerable. Echoing the comments of June Laux, the Malibu Agriculture Society, and Nicole McGinley, it's imperative that the setback be fifteen hundred feet from schools, not the five hundred foot setback that is in the most current revision. In addition to that, tonight, I'd like to express my family's desire for the city to use the strongest language in the ordinance to improve the fire safety of these devices and to make them less invasive to the very rare rural character of our beautiful city of Malibu. You've all done an excellent job of making this issue a high priority and I appreciate your hard work and extra time. Thank you.
Thank you Paula.
Our next speaker is Daisy Kim Pang.
Good evening council, can you hear me?
Hi Daisy, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, good evening council. My name is Daisy Week and Pang on behalf of Verizon. And I would like to thank council for the opportunity to speak with you today regarding item one A. Verizon does appreciate the city's desire to update its code with regards to the wireless installations in the public right of way. However, we would like to refer, I would like to refer you to a letter that we had sent to council this evening from council, from our outside council Kevin Sullivan, that was sent prior to the meeting with some points that we have raised with regards to this particular urgency ordinance. Verizon would like to urge council to defer taking action under urgency ordinance today and direct staff to work with industry in order to go through several of the standards and/or requirements that are being put in front of you today. Certain parts of the proposed ordinance are inconsistent with federal and state law. And Verizon, in its attempt in the last two years, has been basically responding to the city's request to build resiliency in our network in your city. We appreciate the good partnership that the city has had with us in the past. And therefore, we would like to thank the city for an opportunity to participate in the process with the city updating its wireless ordinance, perhaps in a stakeholders' meeting in order to be part of it in the industry as, as well as FTE in a collaborative spirit and manner. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you today. And we urge you to read the letter that was sent by Kevin Sullivan and look forward to future partnership with the city. Thank you.
Thank you Daisy.
Mayor Pearson, we got an email from Nicole McGinley and Billy and Kate are at the computer and she wanted to know if they could be our next speakers instead of coming back at the end.
I think we should get them on right away.
Wonderful.
What are we saying?
Go ahead.
Ours is a video presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for making a priority of this and creating this special meeting.
Please keep wireless antennas fifteen hundred feet away from my home and my school.
I lost my home in the Woolsey fire and I would like as much safety and protection from losing my home again.
We really don't want antennas near schools, parks, and especially our homes. Please do whatever you can to keep placement as far away from our residential area as possible.
Thank you for considering us in our future.
Thank you.
Thank you Billy and Kate, appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Lonnie Gordon.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, hi Lonnie.
Okay, let me get to my notes, please. Hold on before you start the clock. Good evening council. Thank you for calling the special meeting. We really appreciate it. We appreciate the fact that you're working for us. And I'd like to bring up an issue that may or may not have been addressed regarding the telecom ordinance. And while you're addressing aesthetics, there's a more important issue. Insurance and reinsurance. Correct insurance covers all liabilities that can be generated by WCF equipment installed in the city or private property such as wireless antennas and supporting ancillary equipment. The antennas emit pulse data modulated radio frequency electromagnetic microwave radiation known as RF-EMR, a scientifically established health hazard. A city often will not reject installations of WCFs for reasons of health hazards. Therefore, it's crucial to obtain complete third-party insurance coverage for injury to the health of the city's residents. General liability insurance may be required as part of a use permit or as a condition of the master li, master, sorry, license agreement for deployment of WCF infrastructure. The precise kind of insurance that must be obtained without compromise is a health insurance that's called pollution insurance. Most general liability insurance policies have a pollution exclusion. And under this exclusion, those RF EMFs that I listed as pollutants must demand that the city of any kind that allows a telecom to allow or install WCFs in the city must include specific pollution coverage in the MLA or other licensing agreement. Hold on, because I have to have a drink of water here. These are complicated words. This insurance must be obtained from a licensed third-party insurance company, not a self-insured indemnity substitute by a telecom or any company listed on a licensing agreement. In the event that a master license or permit already exists between the city and a big wireless company, the city must examine the insurance provisions carefully and will find that pollution insurance is routinely not covered. The city should demand a copy of the actual third-party insurance policy relating to the permit and inform the big wireless company that it's in breach of the permit until such time as a proper pollution insurance is obtained. All further installations will cease. There are methods by which telecoms attempt to avoid proper insurance in the contracts they negotiate with the cities and to protect the health and well-being of their citizens and to avoid possible lawsuits by such citizens against the city or its employees or the city council. The city must reject any offer of self-insurance or indemnity made by the installing company as not sufficient. Due to the well-established thousands of studies on these RMF and EFs hazards as stated by the major insurance companies such as Lloyds of London and Swiss RE, they do not offer pollution insurance.
Lonnie, your time is up.
I, oh, I had a joke to finish with. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much Lonnie.
Our next speaker is Tony Simmons.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tony Simmons. I am a professional engineer licensed by the state of California. As a professional engineer, my primary duty is to ensure public safety from the engineering face. Professional engineers have a duty, a duty to learn from past failures. The list of required documents under discussion were based on five engineering failures. The two thousand seven Malibu Canyon Fire was started by down CE, SCE pole with three telecom carriers on it, three wirelesses on it. In two thousand fifteen, Stockton experienced a catastrophic failure of PGE meters as a result of a downed power line. In June of two twenty twenty, PG and E CEO Bill Johnson entered guilty pleas on behalf of the company for eighty-four felony counts of involuntary manslaughter stemming from the fire. The Woolsey Fire in two thousand eighteen burned, burned nearly ninety-seven thousand acres, over sixteen hundred homes, and caused three lives. A redacted version of the Woolsey Fire investigation report shows that SCE Edison's equipment sparked the two thousand eighteen blaze. Seventeen utilities have removed seven hundred and ninety thousand recently installed meters as a safety fire precaution. The common factor in all of these incidents is a failure of due diligence at the utility engineering stage. The proposed engineering documents and requirement that they be sealed by a professional, a professional engineer will demonstrate rigor by a state credentialed expert at the engineering stage of the project. Basically, we need to make sure that you have those documents in there to demonstrate that city of Malibu has done its due diligence. And later on, if there is a fire, you can prove that you guys were not negligent. So it's pretty common utility practice to take this approach. So thank you for your time.
Thank you Tony.
Our next speaker is Susan Foster.
There, can you hear me?
I can hear you Susan.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this meeting. It speaks very highly of you that you've all come together. And tonight, I'm going to speak to you from the heart as an honorary firefighter with the San Diego Fire Department and as someone who is very actively trying to keep Malibu and other western cities from burning. I had prepared remarks on different aspects of fire safety tonight, but our electric fire safety engineering rigor that I created with electrical engineer Tony Simmons, whom you just heard, has been left out of the application requirements in this urgency ordinance. And I am beyond disappointed. Without this engineering rigor as a requirement of the application process, in other words, the carriers have to come to Malibu with these steps already accomplished by a professional engineer, signed and sealed and attached to the application. Without them, then we will have failed in protecting Malibu and Malibu's residents from potential fires. I have worked as an advisor to San Diego County on two different ordinances, two thousand one and two thousand two, and then again in two thousand nineteen. The first ordinance went all the way to the US Supreme Court and was upheld. I was the fire safety advisor on the Encinitas ordinance. And I have never before seen an ordinance passed without application requirements particularly as urgent as fire safety left for a future time and left to the planner's discretion. Therefore, I am going to read to the council what was omitted that Scott McCullough insisted be included at a very minimum and implore you to ask any questions of electrical engineer Tony Simmons with whom I've logged countless hours in perfecting this fire safety language. I implore you to take advantage of his presence tonight and ask him to interpret these twelve essential application requirements so that they may be included. I will get through as many as I can of the basic twelve engineering requirements in my remaining three minutes. I hope you can include these requirements on an interim basis. One, electrical safety information. Two, a short circuit and coordination study calculated pursuant to the IEEE five-five-one-two thousand six. Three, a one-line diagram of the electrical system. Four, a voltage drop study. Five, a load calculation. Six, a panel directories. And I, I know I'm running out of time, so I will just implore you to look at Scott's list, which he put up on the screen. You have Tony here. I know that's not your typical one.
Susan, your time is up.
Yeah, but I'm imploring you, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you Susan.
Bruce Silverstein is your next speaker.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you Bruce.
Okay, excellent. Good evening. The kids were wonderful. Also, I'm so impressed with the quality of the comments of the members of our community. It's a sin that they have only three minutes to speak and that we aren't able to see them as they speak. Of course, the technology does exist to allow time sharing, you know, like we did during live meetings with up to eight minutes and with residents' presence. But for some reason, the city council refuses to allow those things during COVID. Before speaking about the proposed urgency ordinance, and I, I will speak about that, I want to say a few words about the closed-door session for which there was no opportunity to provide public comment after the mayor's announcement of what occurred. The original agenda for this meeting was timely posted on December four. It didn't include the closed-door session. The amended agenda was posted at four PM yesterday, just twenty-five hours before the closed-door session. Technically, timely. Special meetings are held to deal with special, with specific business so urgent it can't wait until the next regularly scheduled meeting. There are not a safety net for regular meetings that didn't get posted on time or scheduled on time. The putative emergency that necessitated that was the appointment of an interim city attorney. We knew the city attorney had resigned a month ago. There was a regular meeting between now and then. I know the mayor stated in his prepared remarks the decision was made to facilitate city council having breathing room to address the question down the road. I question that assertion. I'm confident there's much more to the decision that's been publicly acknowledged, but that's an issue for another day. Turning to the proposed ordinance. I agree with the many residents who already have spoken that city council should adopt the more stringent ordinance that proposed by the residents as an interim ordinance pending a further evaluation of a permanent ordinance. I support the prompt adoption of an urgency ordinance for all the reasons set forth in my written submission, which I hope you read, and I hope you've read the written submissions of all the residents. And I would like to hear an explanation of why the ordinance, if adopted tonight as an urgency ordinance, will not be effective immediately. As I've explained in my written submission, it seems to me that the proposed urgency ordinance is akin to a preliminary injunction that's issued to prevent potential irreparable injury while the facts are ironed out. The number one obligation of government is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. It's my understanding that Malibu lacks the authority to reverse the installations subject to the proposed urgency ordinance once they occur. Thus, every day that the effectiveness of the proposed urgency ordinance is delayed is a day that further installations may occur. If the installations do pose a danger to the community, that means that every day the effectiveness of the proposed urgency ordinance is delayed is a day the health, safety, and welfare of the community is subject to increased risk. Accordingly, the city council should agree with the city attorney, city assistant city attorney, and other two lawyers from BBK that there's an adequate basis to conclude that there's an urgent need to approve the proposed urgency ordinance this evening. It makes no sense, however, to delay the effectiveness of the urgency ordinance. The ordinance being considered on an urgent basis tonight should have been considered many months ago, if not earlier. As such, the ordinance should be made effective in the earliest possible time. And again, this is another emergency of your own making, just like the need to have that closed-door session tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Gibbs.
Good evening.
Hi Linda.
Hi. I would just like to extend gratitude and agreement to all of you and to all the speakers who have taken time out of their evening and away from their families to speak tonight. I, I would, most importantly, would ask that you adopt all of Scott's notes, especially the fire, you know, of concerns. You know, we spend time looking at mitigating what kind of plants we can plant in our yard and what kind of trees we can plant in our yard. But really, we need to focus on stopping what's starting these fires. I'm still shaking a little bit from I'm still shaking a little bit from having to, I understand it's only fair, but Daisy from Verizon asking us not to pass this urgency ordinance. This is so important to our city, and it is an interim to the more permanent one where you are working with them. So to me, it's galling that she did that, and especially because right now they have a 500-foot ordinance that they can't even seem to stick within. And I don't know, I was very late in submitting a photo, but yes, here. I want you to take a look at how close on that light pole that small cell antenna is to the corner of probably someone's bedroom and/or living room, whatever it is, that is nowhere near 500 feet. And we're asking for 1,500 feet. They always find loopholes. And so I think it is really important for you guys to really dot your i's and cross your t's and take advantage of Scott, who is incredibly educated and prepared on this issue and working with us to heed his warnings. Thank you. That's all I'll say.
Thank you, Linda.
Our next speaker is Jessica Isles.
Hello.
Hi, Jessica.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for all the great minds that have come together to help Malibu, great minds with a lot of time that you've given. But unless this is passed and it's made effective immediately, you are probably going to be flooded with hundreds of applications. Daisy from Verizon gone on there, she doesn't want this passed. And guess what? She wants the weakest ordinance passed as possible. And if it doesn't go into effect right away, we are laid completely naked. She's going to go in there, whoever, all the small tower installers are going to go in there as fast as they can and file their applications. And guess what? You have 30, 60 days to complete that, in spite of us having a fire and you guys being overworked with all of that anyway, right? So the only way I can see is that you guys adopt this urgency ordinance with all of the strictest recommendations from all of these experts. I mean, you have the most amazing people giving you all this information. And it doesn't seem sensible not to make those changes tonight and adopt it in its strictest format. Really, the fact that Daisy from Verizon actually got on to come and speak actually tells us a lot about what we're doing. We're going in the right direction, right? Because they wouldn't bother if they weren't threatened. And they know that this is the right thing to do. We are here to protect the people of Malibu with all the safety measures that are there that are possible. I cannot believe that they don't have structural engineer requirements, you know, before they can put these things up. It's absolutely crazy. And by the way, I don't know if anyone noticed on one of those photographs when we zoomed in on it, did you see that huge writing on the cell, the small cell tower? Stay back. Stay back. Well, we want those back 1,500 feet. You know, and there had other warnings underneath. I couldn't actually see what it said, but they were probably just as alarming. So for us to not adopt this urgency ordinance with the strictest language possible and to put it into effect immediately is absolutely doing what Daisy wants. I'm sorry, Daisy, don't know your last name anymore. It's not listed on my screen. But we don't want that. And it's not to say don't work with industry, but not now, not at this point. You have enough great minds thinking and putting the information in front of you. I urge you to adopt this ordinance with all the strictest recommendations. Thank you so much, and have a great holiday season.
Thank you, Jessica.
Our next speaker is Craig Hill.
Mr. Mayor, before Craig speaks, can I just jump in with a quick little fact check so that people don't get confused? Urgency ordinances do take effect immediately, so not to worry about that. Sorry, Craig.
Good evening, council and staff. And Kristy, thank you for your service over the years and for orchestrating this excellent implementation of Council Policy Number Seven, Promoting Community Involvement in Decision-Making. So I have some questions, not necessarily of you, but for you to be asking. You might well all benefit by having some more context. In particular, I think you'd like to hear from Mr. McCullough get his perspective on the following. How does this effort compare to those of other municipalities? I recall hearing that others have already have more rigorous, aggressive regulation. I think maybe I heard Santa Cruz or Del Mar. I forget what cities now, but there's a sense that we're behind the ball. Is this bringing us up to speed? And as a practical matter, how far is Malibu sticking its neck out in comparison? Could the city go even further, or have others already gone further? How close are we coming to becoming the nail that gets hammered down first or not? Also, with respect to context, it might be helpful to know whether there's been any legal pushback at the federal level on the unreasonably short shot clocks or the quote "effective prohibition standard," for example, or at the CPUC level on any of the safety provisions. It would just be good to hear to know more about what the greater field of regulation is looking like. Onto more specific provisions. You've heard that you can protect scenic resources. Well, that's anything in view of P C H at least. And then what about the requirement, what about a requirement of a site plan review or something analogous for anything over 18 feet? I mean, you could stretch the analogy a bit, but to say that anything higher, they'd be enjoying a privilege that the majority of local residents don't get to enjoy. Otherwise, let's see, Ryan Embry has some helpful comments on backup power and issues of integrating with the Edison Grid. Susan Foster's request about fire safety language sounds critical. And what happens with Mr. McCullough's comments that are still under review? If you don't include them tonight, do they come to the planning commission at the next meeting? Or how soon do those get integrated if you don't do them tonight? And I see I have half a minute left, so under Council Policy Seven, I'd like to cede that to Lonnie, in the interest of promoting community involvement in decision-making, to hear her joke. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Our next speaker is Mark Graham.
Yes, okay, there we are. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mark.
Excellent. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham. I live in the city of Elk Grove, and we are close to Sacramento, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Elk Grove went through quite a process here, and we came up with what I think is a good, but not great, policy regarding cell antenna permitting. The best thing that we have in our ordinance, and I do thank our council, and I thanked our council for this, is what I call the front yard rule. According to our new amendments to our municipal code, the city will not permit a new cell antenna immediately adjacent to or across the street from the front yard of any residential dwelling. Now, that effectively kept cell antennas away from, I don't know what percentage of homes in Elk Grove, but lots, I would guess, more than half, maybe 60 or 70%, maybe more. I happen to have a house with a front yard, and there's a city-owned light pole right in front of it. And so the front yard rule is going to protect that light pole from having a cell antenna on it. But there's so much more that the city of Elk Grove could have done, and I'm asking you to consider these things. For one, you can require the applicant to send out notices, let's say, to every resident within 500 feet of a proposed cell antenna site. And the notice should be very thorough, and they should hold a public meeting, which these days, of course, would be virtual, and to field questions from the members of the public that attend that meeting and to provide written responses to those questions. This would encourage transparency on the part of the carriers. What they like to do is hide, and they want the minimal amount of exposure and the minimal amount of transparency, and it's just bad policy all the way around. Another thing you can do is require the carriers to pay to the city with their application, amount of money that's determined by the city, so that for the city to spend on hiring an independent, third-party expert of some kind to evaluate the application and evaluate all the technical aspects of it, including the radio frequency compliance report, propagation maps, and all kinds of things. You know, the city staff simply does not have the expertise and the qualifications to review these things, and I don't blame them. Now, there are lots of other things you could do. Anything in general that the city does to make the application process long and complicated and involved will probably deter them. Anything that you do to raise the applicant's costs will probably deter them. You can require them to place all the equipment undergrounds that can be placed underground, which of course excludes the antenna itself. You could also require them, you put in the zoning code, a requirement for twice-annual random testing of the radio frequency emissions from each antenna, paid for by the applicant, scheduled by the city with no notice to the applicant, and the purpose would be to determine the compliance of that antenna with the FCC's radio frequency emissions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Our next speaker was signed up as Corey Encinitas resident, but we don't see anyone with that name or anything similar to it in the meeting. So we'll try to circle back to them in just a minute. We only have a couple more speakers.
Okay.
So we'll hear from Ryan Embry now.
Okay.
Good evening, City Council. I want to recap how we got here, and that is that the undergrounding of facilities was not being honored by the applicants and the city staff in the above-ground infrastructure and electrical equipment, cabinets, radios, which can and typically are placed underground, were being processed and presented to planning commission and city council and recommended for approval. I want to make very clear that you're amending the right-of-way section of the code tonight and not necessarily the city's existing wireless communication facility ordinance, which is, I think, 17.46. But I've noticed a couple things, and mainly I'll just go quickly to the definitions, because wireless communications facility or transmitter is defined in 17.46, but it's not adequately defined under the section. I'll refer to page 6 of 15 of the report of the ordinance. And I'll just go quickly to the items. The utility pole, as defined. We've had applications for poles that don't have any utilities on them but are owned by Edison just to stabilize a utility pole nearby. And it's almost like a free pole for a cell transmitter. I would suggest you amend the utility pole definition, remove the words "designed to support" and substitute the word "carrying." The next is the wireless facility definition includes the term of base station, which is an undefined term elsewhere. It's not in there. So the supporting or associated electrical, electronic, radio frequency equipment should be defined as included as part of the facility, and that all of these facilities shall be located underground, and that there's no such thing as a discretionary staff or director's waiver or variance from that standard. It must be by the planning commission or the city council. There are already multiple providers of streaming video data, which include the two franchise providers of Charter Spectrum and Frontier File. You can get a satellite with DirecTV or Dish Network. It's very clear that this intensification and densification of a cell into much tinier, short-distance transmitters is to compete for revenue for data streaming services into homes. This is not necessary and is not required and would be exempt from the city's franchise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
We're going to circle back now to Susie Duck, who's joined the meeting.
Okay, great.
Hi, I'm coming. Hi, you guys. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak, and I'm coming your way from the Valley of the Sun, from Phoenix, Arizona, where I am in my third month caring for a sister with a catastrophic illness that is not COVID. And I am so grateful for this opportunity, and I am proud to say that, you know, I have a personal relationship with every single one of you, fabulous city council folks. And I, there are so many more people, there are so many people who are so much more educated about this, who have spoken before me. I want to just speak quickly from my heart, and as you five in particular know, and it's tattooed across my heart, my terror of fire from the last time where I spent three hours begging three different trucks to please go help 19 of my neighbors whose homes burned to the ground in the upper bowl of Corral Canyon during the Woolsey Fire. And that recurring nightmare is very, very available to me. So I have lost count of how many times I've evacuated. Fire is just a terror for all of us. And I also heard a very important thing from one of the nine doctors on the very complicated case of my sister say recently that sometimes people who are highly educated within their industries, who are esteemed, learned folk, get everything wrong. And so I just urge you to do what you are doing and listen to us with open hearts as you have in the past. And thank you again for taking the time to let us speak. Take care, and I hope that each of you and everyone on this call and everyone's families continue to find all of the strength and resilience in staying safe and healthy. Thanks again.
Thank you for calling in, Susie.
Thank you.
So the Corey Encinitas resident, we still don't have anyone by that name in the meeting, so that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we are back to the council here. Is everyone all right? Do we need a quick five-minute break? Are we all right? I sense some people needing to stretch. Are we all right?
We have lost Jefferson.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can't find him.
Why?
Look, I need a quick five-minute break. I'm sorry. I know we want to keep going, but I need to stretch quickly, and let's try and find Jefferson. So let's come back. It's 7:45. Let's be back by 7:50 and keep moving, all right? Well, Rick, looks like it's just you and I at the moment. Oh, and Kristy, of course. Oh, then Rick disappears.
I'm back.
We're back. Oh, there we go.
I see you guys.
You hiding back there? Oh, I see Jefferson's on now. Just can't see him. Karen? There's Karen with just... There's Karen with just, oh, I think Jefferson's gone. Okay, we got everyone back. Okay, it's. Seven fifty. Well done. I think we're good to go back in session here. Okay, um. I'm sure there's plenty of questions from staff. I'm I'm sorry, from the council. Does anyone want to start off? I see Karen's hand is up. So Karen, what do you got?
Okay, I thank you. I'll start with the request that was made the most frequently, and that was with the fifteen hundred foot setback. Can someone address that, please?
Sure, I think that's probably me or Christie. Are you gonna?
You go ahead for scale and then I'll back you.
So there are a couple of different. Provisions, so this is all in the in the resolution. If you want to refer to the specific provisions, what we, and I think Richard can probably. Confirm that, but what we did was we took the what was in your existing. Zoning code in terms of the separation. So there's been a little, I just want to clarify a little bit the terminology. Because sometimes people are talking about setbacks and sometimes they're talking about separations. And so we're looking, here we're dealing with in the public right of way. So if there were a setback. You know, public rights away by their very nature are narrow, right? I think I don't know what your widest right of way is, but maybe it's. You know, commonly sixty feet, something like that. So when we're talking about separations. We're typically talking about, there may it'll be a radius, but it may, it won't be. It's it's talking about separations between wireless facilities to keep them spread out and not too close. To each other as opposed to. The setback from an actual building and and there may be and. Maybe can, Richard, maybe can address that, but there there. Obviously, there there are going to be all kinds of safety requirements that you can't have a structure for RF emissions reasons or. Or other reasons. You know, too close to a bedroom window or something like that, that the RF emissions. Report that would be required would ensure that there are no unsafe, there are no. Places where people might inadvertently be exposed RF emissions. But the 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 separation requirements in the in the resolution are dealing with separation between facilities. So kind of a radius and there between, I think, four fifty and six hundred feet, which is what. Was in your existing zoning code. So increasing them to fifteen hundred feet. Will. While while there is not like a bright line rule in any of the. In any of the FCC orders or any case law. What will, what we typically hear from from carriers when or applicants when they. Raise these issues in other jurisdictions that are looking at separation requirements. Is that they they will say that their small wireless facilities have a very. Small coverage area, they're lower powered, they're not like a macro cell site that, you know, will cover a mile or something. And that they need to be closer together than fifteen hundred feet. But that that's a case by case basis and it depends really on. The particular wireless carrier, their network, where what they're trying to accomplish with their installation. And what what they may actually be needing to as a service area for their. Proposed facility. So unfortunately, there's not like a clear answer, illegal, legal, or it's it's a bit of a gray area. The the larger the separation requirements, the more likely there'll be some issues with it not. With carriers pushing back on whether they can actually achieve their service objectives. And comply with those requirements. You do have in your code. And and in the design standards, the ability to seek a waiver in certain circumstances. So that does give some relief to to provisions that in particular circumstances could not be met. So let let me just emphasize this because with respect to the separation, which is what Gail was just talking about. We have a lot of provisions in there that are going to help. Scrutinize to make sure that we're not cluttering them. But I think what most of the people in the community were talking about was. Not separation between facilities, but. Fifteen hundred feet from any residences. And that is not, the problem with that is factual. It's probably eliminates almost all the sites. And that may kind of be what we're hoping for with that kind of a requirement, but we are limited to doing. Reasonable requirements that are feasible. And that the kind of that play is something that. There's a lot of law on because way back in the day when the courts were imposing. Adult businesses on cities, one of the things that cities were trying to do was create separation. That was so great and there were so many sensitive uses you had to be away from that effectively, there was no place you could put them and comply. And courts struck that down pretty handily. So if if the hope is that if we say fifteen hundred feet from any residents, because there are so many residents. Along PCH and then, of course, all the residential neighborhoods that would eliminate them, that really isn't a lawful option. We got to come up with separations that, you know, help with the aesthetics and the fire safety. But also ultimately allow some facilities to go up.
How do we take what I heard the residents say? Because I can do the math in my head, too, and I see that certain neighborhoods like mine, it'd be impossible to have a single cell. So I get I get that that's probably not allowed. But how do we more go and? Get them away from? I I hear a lot of complaints, particularly when they go into Point Dune is a good example. People don't want them near their house. How do we? Keep them away from houses and schools? How how does that work?
Gail, do you wanna?
Well, remember that it's an important factor here is to consider. What you're trying to achieve with your regulation and and to to be careful. Not to to adopt regulations that have purposes that aren't allowed. So if if the motivating factor for keeping. A facility away from a house, it beyond, you know, a requirement that they, the applicant meet the this RF. Emissions standards and it's and it's just a concern, a generalized concern about RF emissions. That would not pass muster as a valid requirement. If if the requirements are for keeping. Antennas or these facilities away from certain areas are grounded in aesthetic reasons. Then you're much stronger, obviously. And so I think when you when you're looking at what you're trying to achieve, you have to have that through that lens of is there. A strong aesthetic issue here that we're trying to protect, a view shed, a historic resource, a cultural resource. There, you know, protecting. Those sorts of issues and and so I I do see sometimes, you know, spacing achieves that on some level for sure. And and requirements that. That are we have that kind of thought behind them are are pretty strongly grounded.
Yeah, I mean, I want to have Skylar speak here, but I what I hear mostly in the ones that people have gotten a hold of me on are aesthetics. Because nobody wants one perched right above their house. It's not.
Right, right.
Skylar?
Thank you, Mikey. So I'll so. I have a facility that's located directly in front of my house. It's right in front of my house on my side of the street. It's actually even inside my fence line on a pole. And it's obviously, it's a major visual blight. But I was curious to know, so like we have a pretty concrete standard in regards to the visual blight and saying. You know, if it's, what would you say if it can be seen from a residential house, it's not, you know, it can't go there. I mean, I just, I don't, I don't know how to to regulate that with the proper language and I I very much understand that. The reason for that is grounded in terms of visual blight.
Right.
You've heard people argue here tonight, there's a monetary element that's. That has to do with that as well. So I think that we're on good standing. I just don't know that the best way for us to do that. And my next question. It's pretty related to this is. You were previously asked about the distancing requirements and that's a separation, so. That's a separation from one facility and another, right? So right now it's four hundred feet, you said?
It there's a a couple of different provisions. One talks about. Fifty and one is six hundred, I think.
Okay, so if if we were to to double that, let's call it twelve hundred. There's nothing that's prohibiting us from doing that. And then in the event that a wireless carrier carrier has a, says it's not feasible for them to do that, there's a way for them to. Present their case and a decision to be made on that. Is that correct?
That's that's correct. There is, there is. Some provisions in the resolution that address the circumstances where you can request a waiver and and sometimes it is. One of the circumstances that is actually to, you know, maybe to give an example of maybe. You have a fifteen hundred foot separation and that would require them to choose a utility pole that would be right in front of someone's picture window. But if you allowed it within twelve hundred feet and they could move a little, it could be within, you know, an area that maybe has. It doesn't have that direct kind of visual impact, so it would be like a technical violation, but it actually gives you a better aesthetic result. We have that kind of waiver process built in as well.
Okay, and is is there any? Way for us to go in there and say, like, in in create or or have a setback whereby you could say. You can't locate this within five hundred feet of residential structure. As maybe not saying a property line, but but specifically referencing an existing structure. Or saying, you know, it can't be located within that distance of a a school. There's been some references tonight and I I I totally understand the distinction in the language where. Most people, I think, for. Like in layman's terms, we kind of understand this the setback thing because people. Realize that, you know, maybe they're going to build a house or they they see it in regards to some things that are allowed within a certain distance of a school. So is that something that's possible? Yes or no?
You can, you can have it, something is possible. I don't know, because we haven't done an evaluation of what the impact is Christie was mentioning. If you said fifteen hundred feet from a residential or or five hundred feet from a residential building. Would that mean, would that effectively eliminate? Any use of the public right of way in any residential area that I. Would have to be assessed.
But I think that in there would be many areas where they could still be located. So I I would be in in favor of figuring out a way to do that. I see Christie's issue.
Well, I just, Richard may have some factual information. Yeah, our our issue is that we can't be arbitrary. We can't just. Pick the biggest number we can think of, right? We need to make sure that we're being reasonable so that we can defend it. And Richard may have some insight into. Factual.
And so like, Christie, I imagine that would be the same thing then for increasing the separation.
Yes.
Okay.
Our reason of why, actually, when we were having this discussion, we wanted to stick with the numbers like we have today. The five hundred feet is what we're using currently is our setback distance is my concern was.
Sorry, is that a setback distance or a separation?
A separation, well, separation setback. They they use the word setback in our current code. But the reason why I I'm not saying that we're, my thoughts when I was discussing this with everyone was not that we were against it, but like to do it with some study. Because in areas like Point Doom. From what I have seen is to get the coverage because of the geography, they have had to put cell sites on the point. About ten years ago, the coverage out there was a lot worse if you were along Cliffside Drive. And they only achieved that by moving the cell site out into that area. Because once again, we're avoiding the macro towers on our hilltops and so the smaller sites and. If we were to say fifteen hundred feet in Point Doom, that effectively would eliminate. The the ability to do coverage in that area, which would then lead, as we were discussing, into a situation of requiring waivers. And also, one of the other concerns that. We raised and would Gail voice to you was that the fifteen hundred feet could put the cell site in a area. That isn't a very opportune spot for it from the public's perspective. The lower number gives us a bit more, and this has happened where we've had a little bit more leeway to pick a site. That isn't in front of somebody's house or in front of somebody's window, but maybe move it towards a corner near a commercial building. Since our city is so intermixed with commercial and residential.
And I obviously always appreciate and can. Agree, disagree with some of the logic behind it, because I think the look like the crux of it is very simple. Our community feels that these are being installed quickly. They're being installed too close to residential homes and schools, et cetera, and we want that changed. And the best meth method to do that seems like increasing these distances and having some sort of a setback. From those kind of things. Now, if that meant that none of our cell phones are going to work tomorrow, yeah, it'd be a bummer, but we'd live with it. We lived with it for many years and we were just fine. So that's kind of that's kind of where where I'm at with it, but I know there's other facets to this, so.
And is there a downside to having a greater distance like twelve or fifteen hundred feet and the waiver? For them to submit why they need it closer? Is there a reason not to go that route?
Well, there not not necessarily downside to increasing the distance as long as it can accommodate the placement of them. That to create a rule that would require a waiver for everybody wouldn't. Be well received, I think, if it was challenged, but more importantly than that, you're starting to create just an enormous administrative burden. And it when you go that route, which we may want to do, I mean, there there may be very good reasons to create a lot, a big bureaucracy. To implement this for sure, and that's something that on the sixteenth, when we're talking about the comprehensive, that's one of the things that. We should be looking at. What we're trying to do tonight is really adopt some very robust design standards. And I I know you've seen the resolution, but this is pages and pages of they have to comply with. To get us through for the next few months while we're having the community meetings and. Working on the rules are gonna apply to everybody. So some of the concern is that we not set up a situation where we're having to process. Additional permits and waivers, because we haven't honestly analyzed what the fiscal impact of that is. And we're in the midst of trying to expedite fire rebuilds and we got vacancies in City Hall. I mean, these are all just practical realities. We don't want, we don't want that practical reality to result in, you know. Proliferation of these small cells, that's for sure, but we think that the design standards are the way to get at it.
Are there other towns that have a fifteen hundred foot setback?
I I don't typically see that. There are, there are. So there are, there are, I I can't speak for every community. I know that when the the larger setbacks, the over a thousand feet, fifteen hundred, twelve hundred feet are proposed. There is, when wireless carriers participate, they object. I think that what I more commonly see is around what you have today. There are some instances where I see much lower ones. There also, I would say that sometimes you you always can find. Some city out there that did something like fifteen hundred or or twelve hundred or banned them from whole residential areas. And in some circumstances where the carriers have not really been deploying in that area. For, you know, there as they're rolling out their capital plans, they may not have a challenge. Have challenged those ordinances. In other instances, I've, I've seen the cities end up in, in litigation.
Also remember that, that. Also remember that these, um, facilities are, you know, based in the, the development patterns and the topography of the cities too. So if you have a city that has a lot of commercial area, that's all zoned commercial and it's big enough. You can, um, funnel the sites into the commercial area and leave the residential alone. Then that's fine. You know, in Malibu, we're basically a, you know, rural residential community. And we have the, the topography of the, you know, hill right there. So there, that has to be taken into account too. And it's hard for us to say fifteen hundred feet from any residence only because. That's a hard place to find. Even on PCH.
Jefferson?
Thank you, Mikey. Uh, several are of the other concerns of the top, uh. Most spoken about, um. Issues for the speakers was the financial responsibility for, uh, any malady or, uh. Accident. I did see in the language that there was a provision for it. I think what they may have been speaking to is a little bit more of his financial responsibility or culpability and. In relations to an accident. And the other not, the other most spoken about issue by the speakers were. The fact that they didn't want administrative review, uh, and oversight without. Uh, input from either the planning commission or the council. And I think those are two, uh, valuable speaking points. Which about eight or ten of the speakers touched on. I was wondering if Gail might have a quick comment on those two topics. Thank you.
Certainly. So the, uh, I think if you're talking about, uh, specifically, uh, the level of insurance. Or we, we did include, uh, a, a set of, uh, standard, uh, application, uh. Approval conditions, sorry, in the, in the resolution. And those, uh, start on, uh, section ten. So page eleven and twenty-three. These are the minimum. So in any individual application. Um, uh, they can be adjusted, uh, but these are the ones that would apply if there were nothing. Uh, if for some reason there was a, uh, a deemed grant or something like that. So th- this is the starting point, uh, and, uh, adjustments can be made on an application by application basis. So that's. That's one issue I, I wanted to, uh, point out. Um, the other was your, the. Question about appeals and what we had, uh, we looked very closely at that. And cities do, you know, you're, you're struggling with the two issues of trying to meet these very short FCC shot clock deadlines. And also having, uh, a robust process. And so, uh, what, uh, what was proposed for the urgency ordinance? Was with a hearing officer given that there may be, um, a lot of applications happening over. Uh, and appeals happening over the next several months as we're working everything else out. But that doesn't mean that, uh, uh. Uh, in your final ordinance, you couldn't take a different approach. It, it, it is a trade-off for the, the city council. In terms of having the flexibility to be able to meet, uh, at special meetings very quickly. In order to meet shot clock deadlines, but, uh, Christie probably can talk about that more than me.
It's customarily that we have to announce ten days ahead of time for general meeting. So. With shot clocks that are fewer than that, it would be difficult for the city, this municipality, this municipality to behave properly. And considering posting of the agenda. So I get that. But, uh, I think what the gist was from a lot of the speakers is. They wanted, they, they wanted more input from their council or planning commission. So I would suggest that that would be one of the things that we could talk about when I'm off council and to, in the two week period. And I would suggest that that should move forward as well.
Councilmember Wagner, I would just also add that, uh, the planning commission, um, for, at least for the rights away isn't the right one. Because they deal with the planning and zoning, but, um, you know, I said, I had mentioned in the staff report that the public works commission might be. A good, um, alternative if, um, you know what, we didn't want to use an administrative, um, hearing. But it is, you know, it's an, is an evidentiary hearing. So it would be a lot in the next couple of weeks. On five days, four days notice to bring the council together, to get a full staff report, to get you up to speed on all of the evidence. And, and have it weighed, I think, um, again, just for our immediate purposes. And I, and I do think that the. As you point out, the larger discussion that's about to can, uh, go on with the community, starting on the sixteenth. Should look hard at what the alternatives are for appeals and there, you know, there are plenty of good ones.
Thank you.
I got a few comments. If I may?
Yes, please.
Um, Stephanie said, talking to her friend about, from Santa Barbara, she's right. You know, Malibu is unique because of its rural nature and how much open space there is. You're right. And it's, uh. The mission and vision statement are the key to that. And that's what the founders wanted. So thank you for, uh, pointing that out. And also, uh, Jen Resinko, I love your thing about. I'm okay with doing less, with less conveniences. That's actually in the, I think the vision statement. About doing, uh, that with less urban and suburban conveniences. So that is important. Thank you for mentioning that. But I want to get to, uh, some of the specifics that people are asking about. In particular, I want to talk about Scott McCullough's, start with his. Um, he talked about the application additions, all those things in green that he had there that he wanted to put on. Did I hear him? Correctly to say that he just sent those in last night to have. Added in or had they been discussed before? I mean, because you guys have been talking to him for a while. Is that a new thing that he added just last night?
I thi- I thi- I believe he had, uh, a, a list in his original ordinance. But, uh, he, he did a, a, a list for this ordinance that probably has a lot of overlap. Uh, but, uh, we did get it yesterday. Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we've all been working on a very short fuse, so there's no flag on the play.
No, I get it. I get it. I mean, yeah.
I mean, I think Scott did a great job being as responsive as possible on short notice, you know, back and forth, both of us.
Yeah, no, I'm, that's what I've always been, uh, encouraging is that you guys work closely with him and it sounded like you were, but he said that. It's like, you know, I, I just brought these in last night, so.
I think he actually, he produced some of them on Monday and then the, he, he provided a revised with the, the green highlights yesterday. That was. To be fair.
So when you look at those green highlights that he talked about, um, you know, B through. IX and XXXIV, uh, is that some of the safety issues that they were talking about?
So, uh, yeah, yes, uh, absolutely. So that there, the, we, we started working on. Reviewing those application, uh, requirements in some detail. Uh, it's just been a timing issue in terms of not being able to get input from all of the relevant, uh, city. Uh, staff on some of it and, and trying to do this in a comprehensive way where. You'll, you will actually, the next step, if, if this is adopted, is, is to revise the existing application form. Uh, and so that's where it, uh, definitely this continuing review of these requirements comes in. Uh, and, uh, can be some, the issuance of the new application form can, can address. Uh, the, the requirements once we've had a, a fuller, uh, a little more time to evaluate them.
And maybe all.
Just because you don't adopt it whole hog tonight doesn't mean that the staff can't, uh, require those things. Or require everything that they feel is necessary, even if it's beyond that, to meet the requirements of those long design standards. Remember, the application has to justify approval. So they're gonna have to prove every single one of those.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to focus on the key elements that were brought up and he's one of the key players. And that was, uh. You know, he brought up, ba- basically brought up the noticing requirements and those additions to the applications. Uh, you know, and he cited the specific ones, not all the ones in green, but those particular ones that I mentioned. So what you're saying is that, hey, if we adopt this thing now. As part of the ongoing revision process, which we're going to be doing. Like real soon, um, they could be incorporated then.
Right. I think the, the noticing too, it's, it's not ten days, it was changed to five days. I don't get, Gail, you want to comment on that? But I, but the noticing is, I think it's different from what he was referring to also, that was changed.
That's right. I, uh, as I heard what Scott said, uh, his, uh, he, he had a concern and he had expressed it before in, in other. Uh, conversations about the, the existing language which, uh, which we had, uh, continued with. Which said that ten days after a complete application was when the notice to the public was going to be issued by the city. So that in that, uh, radius area, which we expanded to a thousand feet. Uh, what actually, in the latest revision, if you see the red lines, you'll see that we, we had changed that to, we heard that. Uh, concern, uh, and we've made a modification so that the notice now would come out. Uh, five business days from when the application is received. And, and that's in order, and Richard can speak to this better than I, in order, uh, that's the kind of the minimal time to be able to get. Uh, the service that provides these notices to get a proper notice out.
Are we also posting them online right away?
Yeah, that has become the, the practice and it, although we didn't put that in the ordinance as a, as a requirement. That is now the city's practice.
And it's posted as well on the site.
Okay, and I wanted to mention the things that Nicole brought up about the, uh, strand mounted is dangerous and not have those. You know, I can see why aesthetically it might be pleasing in a place where you don't have Santa Ana winds blowing and poles overloaded, et cetera. So. Uh, can you comment on, on that strand mounted thing in our latest red line version?
Uh, su- sure. I, I, uh, I, I think, uh, that the initial reason why it was included. Was based on some staff feedback that at, that, uh, that there was a, a dislike for. Putting you, uh, any wireless installations pole tops. So at the top of the pole, you have, you go above the power lines. You need a, a separation of at least six feet. So it usually adds at least ten feet to the utility pole height. And so in a, in a, in a, uh, in an effort to discourage that. Kind of installation, we tried to make the installations that are in what you call the communication space or the space. Where the fiber and cable lines go below the power lines, make that the area where, where, uh. The wireless facilities would go and those would either be attached to the pole or they would be, there are strand mounted. Uh, facilities. They do have to meet wind loading and other requirements of the electric utilities so that, and, and, uh. The Public Utilities Commission. So there, there are safety, uh, standards that they go through. Uh, and revisions that they go through, uh, but, but they, uh, you know, I've seen cities go. Different ways on whether they prefer them or want to discourage them or dislike them. So that was the initial rationale.
Right. This is not a legal issue at all. This is a hundred percent a policy issue and it's not coming from, you know, us. It's, it's really, uh, staffs. You may want to ask Richard more about why he feels that way.
So as Gail had mentioned, the, the reason why our staff came up with that as a suggestion was exactly what Gail said. To avoid, uh, the increase in pole height in this equipment on top of the pole. So the idea would be bring it more into what's already a. Disturbed view area. So it was an effort to preserve views because normally when we review. Uh, wireless facilities or bring them before the planning commission, uh, one of the most common, uh, concerns raised by the residents that are in the area. Are if they're looking out their front window and that they're a higher elevation, uh, than you, they used to look over the pole. And now they end up actually seeing something taller in their blue water view. Uh, as mentioned, uh, by both Gail and Christie. It's purely aesthetic and if the commission or council, excuse me, wishes that, uh, staff not encourage those, we'd be glad to do it.
Uh, do we know if there's, I mean, when you think about it. If you've just gone through a wind event and you see wires flailing all over the place, it's normal to think that, hey, that's gotta be worse. But is there any? Data on that stuff? I mean, if we had some failures of line mounted, um, you know, antennas. Probably should look into that, I would say. Anyway, uh, I just want to throw that out there because she brought it up. And the other thing is that, and I think there's kind of addressed, but they kept referring to pollution. Insurance. Gail, can you address that?
Yes, so that, that is one of the, uh, requests, uh, that was made by Mr. McCullough. Uh, in, uh, and we are still investigating that. I think actually Trevor, uh, has some information on. Uh, on that topic. We asked him for, uh, Mr. McCullough for some examples of other. Uh, uh, cities in California that had adopted that. And I don't think he had come up with one. So we're still, uh, investigating whether that's even a, an available type of insurance in this circumstance in California. But Trevor probably has more to say.
Sure. Okay. Thanks for bringing the Christmas spirit there. Um, I, uh, this is something that we're looking into. Of course, we're not opposed to requiring additional insurance. The, the, you know, the, the, the purpose behind the, you know, there is, we, we are a number of requirements. There's new insurance requirements. And there's also a bonding requirement that we're putting in as, as part of the proposed urgency ordinance before you right now. This additional insurance is, is, uh, you know, related to basically RF exposure. And if, if, if these utilities. Were sued and they all went bankrupt, that there would be some kind of remaining liability to the cities. We're looking into how widely that's available, what the cost is involved. Um, uh, you know, Scott for, forwarded us, I think, a, a small city in, uh, Wisconsin that, that has made this requirement. We just don't have the diligence yet to, to fully understand what imposing that requirement would be. We're not, not opposed. Of course, in theory to requiring additional insurance, we just need to know more about that, um, before we put it in place.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing I wanted to say in general was that, uh, Christie, thank you very much for. Putting this, uh. This option, I would say, forward and for really kind of getting your head around this. And we're at a difficult impasse. And everybody wants to help and we have to kind of thread the needle on the federal requirements, et cetera. And Gail, thanks for all the hard work and Trevor also. And, um, Mikey, mostly you for really picking the ball up and, um. Doing that urgency ordinance thing, your, was really your, you pushed it and I appreciate that. I know the neighbors do. So I think it's. You know, as we're looking at this tonight, we've got the red line document, which we can go, let's go, let's get it done. And then all these other things that people want. We can rapidly incorporate them into the near future. From the perspective of the, uh, community activists, they're like, nah. We want, we want, we want everything in there and we want it now. And I, I get that because they're, um. Every justification to be paranoid about the slow wheels of bureaucracy. So. That's the dilemma we're at, Mikey, you know. So I wanted to throw the ball into your lap there and have you kind of address it because you and Karen are gonna have to. Continue carrying this ball over, uh, a numerous goal lines in the future, but we've got an opportunity to do something here. And there's a lot of hard work that went into it. And it's like, I guess it's, how much do we want to monkey with this tonight? Or do we just want to go with the red line thing and then in fairly short order in the near future incorporate all these things after we have a, a better look at them. Like the fifteen hundred foot thing, the, um, uh, pollution insurance thing and get a little smarter on, on all of those things. So Mike, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn that over to you and let you wrestle with that dog for a second.
And, uh, and thank you. And I'll get to that, but actually Karen had her hand up for a while and, uh, I want to give her a chance then. Then I'm sure I can find a few words to say. Karen?
Definitely carried off, I might say.
Thank you. Um. Yeah, look, it, there's, there's a lot more to, to work through with this. And I know we need to get something done tonight and I fully support that. But I do want to just reiterate the comments that were made. Uh, by Mark Graham of Elk Grove. Uh, the first thing I'll say is I have never been to Elk Grove. I don't really know what it looks like. But the two things that caught my attention, uh, were the front yard rule that he referenced. If we can incorporate that, or thank you, Skylar, uh, or as much as possible, uh. Try to incorporate that. I'd love to see us do that. Um, and I do have to ask our. Um, and I do have to ask our attorney or, uh, any, anybody who can answer this about the idea of hiring a, a third party to review applications, if there's too much delay there, if it's.
We are, yeah, we, we already have the RFP out, um, for that. And so it'll come back to you. And I'm not exactly sure where the, it is in that process, but that'll come back to the council. And at that point you can kind of make a decision about it. Um, and the staff will give you more information about why they think that's important. But as you can see by just looking at the design standards that we're requiring, we don't want anyone to put anything in the right way that doesn't meet every single one of those standards. And some of those standards are going to take some real expertise to understand if what's being proposed actually meets the standard. And that's, that's the theory behind it. But it'll, that'll come back to you.
Okay.
And I would just add on the, on the expert that we do have in the ordinance, a provision that allows for, uh, it contemplates, uh, retaining consultants where needed.
Thank you. Thanks, Mikey.
At, at the expense.
Um, okay, let me, let me cycle through a bit of this here. And, and I want to thank all the public speakers. Um, really appreciate everyone's hard work and input. And I, I know this, it can be frustrating. Um, government can be frustrating in general. And when you live there, your city government can be frustrating, but we are, we are doing our best here. Um, I understand we're investigating the pollution insurance. I, let me ask a question. So on something like that kind of insurance, is that something that can only, let's, let's say we can do it. Is that something can only be done on new installations? Or can we make it retroactive to ones that are already installed?
Only new applications. Um, the fact of insurance doesn't go to liability, right?
Right.
Insurance, it gives assurances of, of how we would collect on liability, but it doesn't, you know, so I, I think Brexit might be good for the money.
Right. And as far as the administrative review part, I totally understand, um, everyone, what they're saying on that. But I see, I see the logistical issue. Like we're about to take a month off. And I don't know the ability to get people together over the holidays. It'd be hard. And we would be setting ourselves up for a slew of applications going through under that scenario, potentially. Um, and plus, I mean, we have, I don't even know, 2025 projects that were approved before this that are still waiting to go. So we have a, we have a logistical issue too. But I share your concern. Um, and with that said, in the interim, I really hope we can come up, we need a system to make sure we're looking at these. I mean, we're all wanting to look at these closely and and seriously. Because yes, it does appear we're being overrun. I mean, we all hope our cell phone works if we have an emergency and dial 911, but I agree that they are just the prolifer- proliferation, I can hardly say the word, is just overwhelming in some areas. Um, but I see the complication there. I really do. It's, it's almost impossible under that shot clock to have the city council just get together constantly to, if this becomes a huge amount of of, uh, items coming through, I can see that that wouldn't work. So I share the concern and, and who do we think would do that administrator review in the interim until we figure out what we think is the best system?
Appeals at the moment, um, would be, we would, uh, appoint a hearing officer who would do an evidentiary hearing if there's an appeal.
How do we have?
No, how? We don't even know if there will be a lot of these, by the way. That, that's another.
Understood, understood. But how do we, how do we find an appeals officer who has the, uh, technical knowledge to do this?
Well, the, you know, the city council wouldn't have the technical knowledge either, right? So it's, um, what?
But we could call them that.
The ability to weigh evidence and make sure that there's evidence to support the factual findings that establish that each of them. And part of that, um, like you, and you're familiar with this, part of that would be, um, looking at technical experts' reports and deciding whether they are credible and reliable. And so it would be like we, and it, and we use hearing officers for other things. We use them for, um, parking, we use them for smoking. There are other things that we use officers for.
I, I just, I guess what I want to be wary of is getting in a situation where someone's viewing that, that person filling that role. As you know, best friends with Mr. Kramer or something. And I'm being facetious in a way, but
I know.
You know what I'm saying? Yeah. I mean, that role, I think right now becomes more, you know, I know when people get a ticket and they fight it, that I've done through that with the city. You do get passionate about that too. I think people are very passionate about this issue right now.
Yeah. I mean, and, and that's part of the, I'm sorry, Jefferson, I, um, that part of the reason, um, that we want the standards to be as objective and clear as possible, you know, robust, uh, protective, but you know, specific so that there isn't a lot of judgment that goes into it.
Okay. And, and Jefferson, I'm very sorry. For some reason you're on a different screen. So I have not been seeing you. And I don't know how to get you onto the same screen. I gotta be more careful. So yeah, Jefferson, please talk.
All right. Uh, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Yeah, we used to have a telecommunications commission, uh, when I was, uh, in office in the first term. We won't get that done quickly with all the projects we have in front of us as a city where you will have, uh, when I'm gone. However, you could pick out maybe one or two of the most prevalent waivers that we've seen and Gail would know that. What is the most common waiver? And then that you could include in this and say, here's a foundation or here's a boundary that you can't go past without getting an approval from the, the council. And that would make the shot clock, uh, available for a council meeting or a commissioner meeting, whoever we appoint, or whoever you appoint to, uh, oversight this during the interim. Are you following me? We, we used to have a tele, a telecommunications commission. Remember?
Yep.
And in lieu of that, pick out one or two of the most common waivers that these telecommunications, telecommunications companies asks for. Because they're not going to ask everything, including what color the ketchup is that night. They all have the same foundation of need. And if that is common among a, a number of the telecommunications companies, you could put that into this draft tonight and make that the waiver call. Just a suggestion.
So the, um, I appreciate the suggestion. Um, I think that the way that the ordinance and the, um, resolution are designed is, um, not to accommodate waivers, but to actually insist on standards. And so, um, it'd be only in those situations where the applicant could prove an inability or, uh, desirability on, for the city's benefit of, um, waiving a standard that we would even consider it. And so I, I mean, my guess is that we're not going to see a lot of waiver applications. If we do, we're going to probably have to come back to you and say, okay, well, we have a lot of waiver applications and here's what they're looking at. Maybe want to reconsider how we handle them. Um, but our goal is to set out a standards, put everybody on notice of it and have the industry design in accordance with our standards so that we're not waiving things. That's why we're trying to discourage, um, changing so that it would end up in a waiver situation.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Um, so maybe as we wind through this, I'm going to come back to the issue that I'm not the only one that Karen brought up recently. Um, and that would be, I understand the setback issues. I understand the spacing issues. I understand why that, the problems there, but I'd say if there's one issue that stands out to me when I was a planning commissioner and still stands out to me is that people not wanting one mounted in front of their house. So even in a neighborhood where we can't find 500 feet or 1500 feet or 12, any amount of feet because maybe it's Point Doom, the middle Point Doom, or maybe it's Malibu West or wherever. Is there, I would like to find language where we try not to have it mounted in front of houses. Because I think that's where, that's where nobody's happy. And I think generally in a neighborhood, even if it's tightly packed with houses, there are at least intersections of some sort that we could make a better effort while we're fighting our way all the way to where we want to get to control that aesthetic.
If, if I could speak on that, I, I think.
Please, Gail, thank you.
That, that is, uh, something that, uh, uh, we hear, uh, in, in a lot of cities and, and we've looked at forms of language to, uh, address specifically the issue. It's very, um, of, of, you know, not being in some, in front of someone's picture window. Cause we all know when the electric utilities installed utility poles, they did not think about those sorts of issues. They just measured off a certain number of feet and put up the next pole. So, uh, to not add clutter to existing utility poles that would be in those sorts of, uh, views, we, we could uh, propose, uh, some language that would, uh, discourage or, uh, uh, the, the placement of, of facilities on, uh, on poles that were, uh, in locations that are visible from entryways or windows associated with residential structures, something along those lines.
I would say residential and schools. Uh, that I would love to put that in the urgency ordinance if we can, so we can have a.
In, in the resolution, right?
In the resolution, yes. Sorry. Thank you for your help on that. I, I think on the strand mount too, I, I think that issue, I, I hear people are against it, but I'm, don't know why people would want a taller facility. So I, I a little lost on that one at the moment. Personally.
You know, the, the public hearings that we are going to have are exactly for that kind of thing because that's just a community choice. And so you'll hear a lot of different voices on that.
Yeah. And we have to get some statistics as to, you know, failure rate on those things, et cetera.
But Richard, do you know how many of these strand mount, you know, I don't look, there, there's a, they're more uncommon, aren't they?
They are. The ones that I've seen come across my desk are typically pole mounted installations.
And I guess last thing here, maybe, maybe not. I got a lot of notes is, um, what Susan Foster had to say about electrical fire requirements that were left out. What, can I get a comment on that, please?
I think those are all the things that Scott was talking about in green.
Okay, that, okay, that was the same. That was the exact same.
Basically.
Different language on it.
On the application, uh, that uh, he was interested in having worked into the application itself.
Okay. Well, I feel like, I guess the good news is everyone worked really hard and we got a whole bunch of things that are going the right way. It looks like we're stuck on a few issues that we need to make more progress on. But I'm hoping that what we have now will set us up for to survive this, what appears to be a current deluge of applications. Um, and I know we've done it on, you know, what seems like eternity for the community and very, the shortest time I've ever seen anything come forward in the city myself. But you know, that's, that's how that goes. I personally don't know what else to add at this point. Other than we still have work to do and I really, really appreciate Scott and Nicole and Susan and Gail and Christie and Trevor and all the people that have put a lot of work just to get us here.
Well, I think if, uh, uh, we should incorporate what you said about the view from the house thing and closely look at and explore all of the things that were brought up here primarily by Scott and Nicole and reinforced by everybody else having to do with pollution insurance. Look at the 1500 feet thing. Is that realistic? Or is that more of a macro thing?
Application requirements.
The appeal process.
Yes.
Insurance.
Not six months from now, but real time, pretty quick in the near future.
Actually a week from tonight.
Yeah. There you go.
Come to join and you can have your three minutes.
Thank you very much.
Just kidding around. Um.
So that's, I think where we're headed. I'll make a motion to incorporate your, um, suggestion there. If you've got the proper verbiage on it, Christie, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah. Um, unless Gail has words she wants to read into the resolution?
Sure. Right. I can throw something out there and then you can tell me whether it will work for you. So I'm looking at section five, which is the, uh, section five of the resolution, which addresses, you know, where did the titles go? Location standards for all facilities. And I would suggest that we add a new letter D as in dog. And it could say placements should avoid visibility from entryways and windows associated with residences and schools.
What page is that?
Uh, I wrote it on one page and it's on another. So it would be at the top of page five, just before section six, it would be a new letter D.
Okay.
I can, I can help with the motion then if you want.
Sure.
Okay. Could you, Gail, could you just repeat that line one more time?
Yes. Placements should avoid visibility from entryways and windows associated with residences and schools.
Okay. Um.
It should.
Can't see them.
Yeah.
Or shall not be visible.
Okay. Would, would it be possible or better to say, um, should try to avoid be mounted directly in front of residential structures if possible?
Can we just say that it shall not be? And just keep it very simple. They shall not.
I could say that all day long.
Front of residential homes or in, directly in front of schools.
Lawyers, is that good enough?
Just be very simple with it, very clear cut.
Placements shall not be in front of entryways and windows associated with residents in schools.
I was just changing it to residential structures.
Residential structures.
So if you, if you had to build it, like you ran out of options, you, and there was a pole in front of the house and one in front of the garage off to the side, you'd put it in front of the garage. Try and avoid right in front of residences.
So placement shall not be in front of residences and schools.
Christie?
Placement shall not be in front of residential structures or schools.
Residential structures might be a shed though.
That's great. The argument.
That's a whole nother issue. There's a code violation. Um.
Habitable.
No, I, I mean, or you should say in front of a single family dwelling.
Okay. Or you don't, you don't want to leave the apartment.
You can, you can, you can say dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So I, I can help you with the motion then.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so the motion would be uh, staff recommendation with the resolution amended by adding the section D as just read. And also, wait, before I do this, I should have said this before. Let me just take a second because I know there was some confusion out there and I want to make sure we get this. Because I know there was some confusion out there and I want to make sure we get this fact check clear. This motion is going to include, um, both an urgency ordinance, which is immediately effective. And dependent on some very specific findings. And as a belts and suspenders so that, um, you know, the ordinance isn't in jeopardy for long. Um, we also are going to introduce an identical version of the ordinance. And then at a regular meeting, um, in, uh, January, the city council can adopt the regular version. It's identical to the, um, to the urgency ordinance. And then the, the benefit of that is, and then the urgency findings are no longer that important. And if they're challenged, it doesn't matter. So it's just a matter of, you know. Making it safe. Um, the, I, I think the urgency findings are fine. I think they're defensible. I've got no issue with it. But that is just a, uh, best practice when we do urgency ordinances to just, um, also go through that parallel procedure. Of course, the new council is always free to amend this, to repeal it, to decide not to adopt the regular one, but by introducing it, we at least set up that order. Okay, that said, the, the motion would be staff recommendation with the, um, resolution as amended by adding the section D that was just read. And to, um, adopt an ordinance, an urgency ordinance of the city council, the city of Malibu to amend Malibu municipal code, title 12, streets, sidewalks and public places to add chapter 12.02 wireless facilities in public rights of way, amending chapter 1.10 administrative citations and penalties declaring the urgency thereof and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And to introduce on first reading an ordinance with the same title, except not the urgency part.
And Christie, that's the, that's the red line version of the urgency ordinance that was distributed today through the supplement, right? And.
Yes, that includes, includes the suggestions from the community. Exactly.
Can we include in there or is it necessary to include or is it possible to include, uh, lingo about? Taking under advisement and reviewing these suggestions by, uh, Scott McCullough and Nicole McGinley. And I'm only singling them out because those are the important ones that everyone else seemed to reinforce in, uh, as soon as possible.
Right. It goes right, goes without saying, but let's say it. And then so we'll add to that, that this council's given direction to staff to continue to work with, um, this community group on the issues that were not addressed tonight, but raised.
Yes.
And, um, Mr. Mayor, um, Councilmember Wagner has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Jefferson. Yes, please go.
Uh, thank you. Uh, uh, great that you didn't put names in there, even though we applaud those that put so much effort into it because you might save them further complications. Although this city under policy seven always applauds improvisators. And I want to thank the community for this input. I would like to second the motion. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so.
Did we actually have a first for that?
Yeah, who was the first?
Me, Rick.
Oh, perfect. Okay, we have a first, we have a second. Um, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Mullin.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempeek?
I don't think it's perfect, but yes.
Mayor Pearson?
I agree with Skylar, but yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you to, uh, everybody that came for this item too. Item two A, I, I first want to say, um, I want to thank Rick for all his help on this, on item one A. So thank you for joining up on, on pushing that forward. That really, I appreciate that a lot. And I'd like you, if you want to read item two A is really, this is something you worked on for a long time and you've helped guide us even on this, on this item here. And, uh, I'd be happy as, uh, to have you read it and take the helm on this item if you so wish.
Let me see if I can find it. I got papers all over the place here. Let's see.
Throwing you a curve ball there, but I thought, you know.
This is the, this is the, um, contract amendment to add the $50,000 to.
Yeah.
Taber's contract.
Thought if you could man the comm one last time, it'd be.
All right, here we go.
Your hands.
Uh, amendment to, to agreement for services for special legal services with Leach, Tishman, Puscato and Lampel Incorporated to address aviation noise generated from changes to Los Angeles International Airport flight paths. Recommended action. Authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement for legal services with the aforementioned law firm. Any questions on that? We talked about it last time.
Um, can we have a report? Is there a report?
Um, there's not much of a report. It's except to say this, um, we are, um, under siege from the noise that is coming from. Um, oh, you, Councilmember Wagner is holding up the report, so there is a report. Um, from the noise that is coming from the airplanes during, um, implementing the next G, which is a different technology and has brought the planes lower as they come, um, across, uh, Malibu into LAX. There's been a little bit of relief on that because of COVID. There's been fewer flights, but the, um, technology is in place and it's, um, troublesome even with what's going on. We have hired a lawyer, um, to help us pursue a, um, rulemaking effort with FAA that will, um, hopefully result in a change in the rules um, over our city and to deal with the noise. Um, we had a not to exceed amount of $50,000 in that contract. And, um, he ran into an, um, unanticipated problem mostly with the FAA. It, that was very slow to, um, produce the information and it took more effort than he had thought. And so he hasn't quite gotten to, um, prepare the petition under the not to exceed asked for us to increase the, um, contract $15,000. We looked closely at what he had done and we agree that, um, this was unanticipated and so fair is fair. And, um, so we brought back the $15,000, um, amendment to his contract.
Uh, let me chime in here a little bit since I was there from the beginning on this and I think I instigated it in the first place. Uh, you're right, because of COVID, it's not, hasn't been as big of a problem, but it's going to be and uh, it's worse in eastern Malibu, although we get some bizarre flights here in the middle of the night on western part also. And that we've said this before, but I want to say for anybody who's listening, there's a lot of research that went into this and analyzing other cases, some of which were successful in challenging these new next gen system in other cities in the United States. And this is not unique to Malibu. It's happening all over the United States and there are other towns that are dealing with exactly uh, like we are, like I was in Charlotte, where there was a town in suburb of Charlotte that's like the, you know, the Malibu of the Charlotte suburbs. They've been peace and quiet forever. And all of a sudden they've got a bunch of airplanes disturbing their lives and same thing's true in Denver. There's a lot of places that are dealing with this. So this. Option for us is like a lot of things. They're, uh, short term models is an example. We try to draft on other government agencies that are really spending the lion's share to challenge things in the city of Los Angeles is kind of doing that now. And we did, uh, talk to three different legal. Firms that were sort of expert in this field and interviewed the lawyers and we spent most time with, with, uh, Steve Taber. And I think this is a good way to keep our foot in the game, stay smart. And prosecute the desires for the residents of the city of Malibu in a fairly cost effective manner. Trevor, who has been involved with me on this from the beginning is quite literate with it so that when I turn into a pumpkin next week and you want to know what the heck are we spending money on this for? Trevor can, you know, whether he winds up being the city attorney or not, he'll still be in the BBN case, uh, stable, so it can be brought in as the duty expert on all of this. But it's one of those things, it's like, it's not a big deal now, but it could really, really have a negative impact, impact on our quality of life here in the long run. So that's what it's all about. Any questions? Any motion?
I'll make.
Are there, there's no speakers on there?
Oh yeah, we forgot speakers. That was.
And that's okay. We don't have any public speakers on this item.
Okay.
I'll second your motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I never get to, to, uh, you know, anyhow, thank you. Proud to be a first on your, on what you worked on.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Are you ready for a roll call?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullin?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempeek?
Is very enthusiastic, yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, um, I think that's it for tonight until Monday night. And I want to thank everyone for their hard work and their time, including, um, the, still the 40 people that remain on this call, on this Zoom call and, uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
I'll second that motion, but I just want to add that I did spend a few days in Elk Grove when my, um, car broke down. There was a very nice town and the people were very friendly. And thank you for getting involved.
Okay. All right.
We just need to do a quick roll call on that last motion. Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullin?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair? Councilmember Fair, you're muted.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempeek?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries. You are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Right.